May we have a roll call, please. Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The invocation or rather the flag salute this evening will be led by Council Member Friedman and the invocation by our City Clerk Artie Kosakian.
Please join me in our saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. On July 27th, 1953, 56 years ago yesterday, the Korean War Armistice was signed at Poon Mun Jong, ending the three-year conflict which resulted in nearly 4 million Koreans killed or wounded and over 36,000 American military servicemen and women killed. It is referred to as a forgotten war and it shaped a generation of Americans as much as any conflict before it or following. It helped preserve a free South Korea which still stands today. Tonight, let us pray and remember the sacrifice of the many who answered the call and paid the ultimate sacrifice. As we witness events that develop on the Korean Peninsula today, let us give thanks to the brave American men and women without whose commitment to freedom and liberty we could not have today a free and independent South Korea, whose many sons and daughters have immigrated and given to this great nation and to our fair city. Let us pray for the memory of the fallen and for those who stand in the shadow of their legacy. Amen.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the July 28th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, July 23, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next, please?
Next is presentation and appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of August 4, 2009.
Mr. Starburt.
Yes, I'll go to Mr. McFaul, Assistant City Manager, for the update.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Frog is 4th next week. We'll start with the Housing Authority at 2:30, where there's one item. This is the Acting Director of Community Development Housing will be providing a report requesting the approval of PATH Ventures as a new project sponsor for the 2008 Permanent Supportive Housing for the Chronically Homeless Program. Following that, the Redevelopment Agency, there will be a single business item. The Director of Development Services will be submitting a report on the seat refurbishment project and front facade restoration project for the historic Alex Theater. 6 o'clock that evening will be the regular City Council meeting, and there are several items. The first is General Manager of the Water and Power Department with a report regarding the Linden Wind Project's power sales agreement with the Southern California Power Authority and a contract for sale-to-purchase of the Linden Wind Energy with LADWP and SCAPA. Next, the General Manager of Water and Power will present a follow-up report with the Windy Point Windy Flats Project Power Sales Agreement with Southern California Power Authority. Next, the City Manager will be submitting a report on the selection of a designation of a voting delegate and alternatives for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Next, the City Manager, in fact, all the next ones will be from the City Manager, requests from the Home Enotmen, Glendale Arat Chapter, seeking the city's cosponsorship for the 2009 Glendale Friendship Games. Next, the City Manager will have a report requesting cosponsorship for Glendale PATH Achieves' first annual signature dinner and fundraising event. And then lastly, the City Attorney will be providing the Foothill Lumber findings based on the previous action of council.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Mr. Mayor, we should note that next week, as a result of a national night out, you will not be holding your evening meeting, but instead will be holding a special meeting at 2:30 that will take the same form as the council meeting, but it will be at 2:30. So the items Mr. McFaul read will be at 2:30 in the afternoon of the special meeting.
Correct. I actually misnoted that it's 6 o'clock. It's 2:30.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
3B is presentation of Employee Suggestion Award to David Kilgore, Power Plant Control Operator Apprentice.
Hello, I'm Ned Baston, Assistant General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, and it's my pleasure to introduce Dave Kilgore. Dave, first of all, grew up in Glendale, so he's local. He's an apprentice out at the Glendale Power Plant, and he has made a suggestion to help us save on water use at the power plant. Dave started work here and was working about six months when he made the suggestion, so he's very quick to pick up opportunities. What the power plant does is it uses very, very pure water for its gas-fired generation systems. In order to get that very pure water, we have a reverse osmosis system that takes good quality Glendale water and turns it into the equivalent of distilled water. It's not 100% efficient, so some of the water does get discharged. And Dave recognized that it could be used in our cooling towers, so instead of discharging it to waste, we actually use it in the cooling towers. And depending upon how much we use the power plant and how much water we need, that could save into the range of a million gallons of water a year. So it's a very effective recommendation that he made. It's been implemented, and I'd like to present Dave Kilgore.
Bravo.
At the city, we have this nice plaque for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very good. Next, please.
F3C is a presentation by Glendale Community College Board of Trustees thanking council for the donation of two fire apparatus.
I assume we have someone from the...well, we have a number of people. Half the crowd is from the Community College.
Oh, Board of Trust...what do they want?
You have the whole party.
All right. I don't want to get around. Take this here, slowly but surely. Okay. All right. Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Vahe Perumian, and I'm the President of the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees. Along with my fellow board members, who I'll introduce in a second, I come before you for two reasons. First, to introduce the new members of our college administration. We've had a lot of changes, as you may know. And second of all, to thank you for the donation of two fire engines, and I'm told an ambulance as well, to the College and the Verdugo Fire Academy. My fellow board members present are Vice President of the Board, Mrs. Anita Quinones-Gabrielian; Clerk of the Board, Mr. Tony Tartaglia; Board Member, Ms. Anne Ransford; and with us in spirit, she couldn't be here today, she's on travel, Dr. Arminia Hakopian, who sends her best wishes. Now, as you may know, the Superintendent President of the College resigned in May, and the Board appointed Dr. Dawn Lindsay as the interim Superintendent President, and she has a brand-new administration with her, Dr. Vicki Nicholson, who's the Vice President of Human Resources... Yeah, we're all out of order, right? Dr. Mary Murch, interim Vice President of Instruction; Mr. Ron Nakasone, the Executive Vice President. We also have with us Ms. Lisa Brooks, the Executive Director of the Glendale College Foundation. Did I forget anyone? Okay. We also have two members of the staff who run our fire academy, Jan Swinton and Scott Spicer.
Scott Groupke.
Okay. I have Spicer on mine. Okay. All right. Well, all of us at the college, many of us present, would like to thank the council and the Glendale Fire Department, especially Chief Skagians, for the donation of the two fire trucks and the generous donation of the ambulance, which I've told we're receiving for our EMT program. These fire trucks, we're going to be able to train our cadets on campus and much more efficiently, and we're going to be able to instill a sense of pride in having their own equipment to train on. And also, we're not going to be able to tax the reserve engines of the Glendale Fire Department as much as we usually do, given that the fire season is year-round this part of town. So we've prepared a plaque. It reads, "In appreciation to the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Fire Department for the donation of two fire engines to train future firefighters in the Verdugo Fire Academy, Glendale Community College Board of Trustees, July 2009." And I'd like to present this to you, please.
Okay, I'll accept it.
Great.
On with the chief.
I guess the photo op is that way. Right. There you go.
Let's see.
Okay. Thank you very much again.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the Glendale City Council. My name is Sam DiGiovanna. I'm the Chief of the Verdugo Fire Academy at Glendale Community College. I can't thank you enough for this donation and also for all of the support from the Glendale Fire Department. You have a fantastic, very professional supportive organization. They've been very gracious with us, the use of their training center. I can certainly say they're probably the best fire department around. Now, three or four years ago, I would probably say it's Monrovia, but I think the Glendale Fire Department's right up there now. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, say a few words.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just want to let you know how important the relationship is with Glendale Community College for the development of future firefighters. And if you can look in the back of the room, they have some of their current cadets here this evening. They should be acknowledged for being here and taking the time out. They do a lot of community service here in Glendale. Over the years, we have hired recruits out of that academy into our fire academy, and we believe that this academy really helps train the future firefighters that will be in tomorrow's fire department. I think here in Glendale, we do a good job. We really do it right. We have a program at Hoover High School and the Public Safety Academy with police and fire, and we really go after the kids. We tie it up with the college and the youth here, and then we really try to bring them into the fire department in our in-house programs with the cadets and the explorers. Many of these kids have participated in our explorer program. Some of them are in the process of our cadet program, so it's an outstanding community and it really supports this fire department, so it's a small thing we can do for the college.
Thank you, and I also want to recog... Recognize the firefighters that are here this evening, as well as the recruits, cadets there in the corner who have been standing at attention for a long, long time, so they're going to get to relax. Thank you to all of you.
Would you tell them how it is?
Next, please.
F3D is a commendation to 2009 Tri-City Minor League Champion Team, U.S. Black Belt Center.
All right, I think we're going to have to have the firefighters and recruits vacate the space before the...
They're going to march out.
...kids can get in here. Hey, you can come to the front of the...
Slide over.
Slide over.
I'll slide over.
Keep coming, guys. Over here.
Photographer's up here. You can open the gate. It's two for two. You can get up here, right?
Yeah.
Anywhere you want to get up here.
We'd like to thank the Mayor and the City of Glendale for a wonderful parks and recreation system in which these boys and boys like this from around the Little League can practice their sportsmanship and their abilities and to do things like these guys did, which was a come-from-behind last inning win. They were down 6 to 1. Chips were down. We were down...we had two outs. Two outs, and we were still three runs behind, and these guys came and rallied all the way back to a 7-6 victory and proved that, you know, if you keep believing, you can fulfill your dreams, and they kept fighting to the very end, and we really appreciate this commendation and your recognition tonight. Thank you.
Great, I want to...
I'm sorry? My name is Mark Langford, and this is the U.S. Black Belt Center, Minor League, Crescent Valley, Little League champs, as well as the Tri-City champs.
I want to...I'm going to read the commendation, and then we're going to hand you some city pins to the...and then I want you to tell us your name there at the podium. I want you to tell us your name and what school you go to, okay? Let me read the commendation first and thank...yeah, that's right, name and position that you play, and what do you call it? I want to thank the parents also for obviously investing the time and effort that it takes to work with kids who are in Little League. So I have a commendation from the City of Glendale to the CB Black Belts. They're obviously very tough kids in addition to good baseball players. In recognition of your exceptional team play, tenacity, and sportsmanship exhibited throughout the Little League baseball season, your indomitable spirit exhibited in your come-from-behind win in the Tri-Cities Championship exemplifies the American value of never giving up and pursuing goals to fruition. Congratulations to each team member and to your outstanding coaches for a job well done, and with best wishes for your success in all future endeavors. Signed Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale. Congratulations, college.
Okay, guys.
These guys are very big. We'll get in the middle of all this and look at the camera.
Everybody's face in there? Guys, face the camera.
Look at the camera. Okay, all right. Thank you. Everybody get a pin.
Go ahead, Harrison.
Sure, and get a video.
My name is Harrison Wu, and I go to VCS.
All right.
Diego Patrick Enzlow, Valley View Elementary.
And what positions do you play?
My name's Justin, and I go to Dunsmore Elementary School, and I play pitcher.
My name is Ty, and I go to Dunsmore Elementary, and I play first.
I am Dawn Anida, and I go to school Fremont, and I play outfield center.
Cleanup hitter.
My name is Matthew, and I go to Fremont Elementary, and I'm outfield and center.
My name is Jason Lee, and I go to Fremont Elementary, and I play first.
I'm Daniel Ham, and I go to Valley View Elementary School, and I play first and centerfield.
My name is Gregory Walsh. I attend St. Mark's School, and I play second base.
My name is Raphaela Pretion. I go to PCY, and I play right field.
My name is Max Del Torre, and I go to Lacrosse Center Elementary, and I play two positions, which is third base and pitcher.
All right. You've got a good arm. Well, congratulations, college.
You also mentioned Jake De La Hoya, who plays pitcher, and our star catcher in league is not here tonight, but he's here in spirit. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you very much, and thank you to the parents once again.
Thanks.
Got a videotape.
All right, next, please. Thank you.
F3 is a commendation to Altrusa Club Glendale.
An appreciation for your continuing support of the Glendale Public Library and its many reading programs. Through your donations and participation in the One Book One Glendale Citywide Reading Event, the book Group Kit Collection, and the adult and family literacy programs, you have made a lasting and positive impact on the community. I commend you for volunteering your time, resources, energy, and ideas to help make Glendale a more literate city where reading is valued.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Windsor. I'm the Vice President of Altrus International, Inc. of Glendale. We are a service organization dedicated to community service and focused on literacy, and we are part of an international organization with over 11,000 members in clubs from 13 countries. The Glendale Club was organized in March of 1954 and chartered in April of 1955. Through our efforts raising money and volunteering service time, we are able to fill many needs in Glendale and the surrounding communities. Due to our efforts of the past year, we will be able to provide services this club year to the Glendale Association for the Retarded, the Burbank Center for the Retarded, Glendale Community College ESL Classes, College View School, and the YWCA Domestic Shelter for Women, as well as to the Glendale Public Library, to whom we have given our support over the last several years. It is my pleasure tonight, on behalf of Altrusa International, Inc., to present this check for $250 to Cindy...I'm sorry, I've forgotten my last name. Cleary. For the One Book One Glendale Project. This donation is also accompanied by 20 book bags like this one right here, given previously to the library for distribution of the Shanghai Girls Book Group Kits. Cindy, we have truly enjoyed working with the library on these book kits. This is truly a worthwhile citywide project. Thank you very much.
I need to give this to you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
I've been to a number of your events, so I'll have to hear something. Appreciate it.
Got it?
That battery.
That's on purpose.
Thank you very much.
I see you all.
Give this to Laura, please.
Laura?
Yeah.
Oops, there's a camera. All right.
Come back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just very quickly, on behalf of the library, I would like to thank the Altrusans for all that has been mentioned. In addition, they've been supporting us for many, many years, probably 25 years or more, including, besides what's mentioned, our teen services, our literacy services, our...all our reading programs. And I have to do a plug for One Book One Glendale, because the Altrusans will be joining us for a kickoff event on August 22nd, Saturday, August 22nd, at the Americana, the Barnes and Noble at Americana, where our bookmobile will be there. We will be handing out these wonderful Shanghai Girl pins, which we've shared with all of you, and there'll be lion dancers performing, and Barnes and Noble will be donating some of their proceeds from the day sales to support One Book One Glendale. Once again, I encourage everybody to read Shanghai Girls by Lisa C. It's on the bestseller list. It's a great book, and Lisa C. will be joining us in October, so you have plenty of time to read it. Thanks again to the Altrusans. We really appreciate your support.
F3F is a proclamation designating August 4th, 2009, as National Night Out, and to present it will be Sergeant John Gilkerson.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of council. I am Sergeant John Gilkerson from the Glendale Community Policing Unit, and as you know, August 4th this year is National Night Out. This was an effort started back in 1984. It was, as the name suggests, a national endeavor to try to get people involved in the efforts of crime prevention in their communities. Back in that year, they started off with about 2.5 million participants. It's gone strong ever since. Last year, we had 37 million participants in America and actually outside of our borders. Last year, through the efforts of the community policing staff, we put on a pretty successful event up in Montrose, and we wanted to try to build on that and have something in each section of the city this year. There was a gentleman named Ron Scott who stands up here with me today. He was apparently having dinner in Hozolito's last year when our group went marching by, and he said, "What was that?" And he came out and found out what it was. So through the year, Mr. Scott has contacted myself and Officer Zakarian and tried to build this up. He's beaten the drum, and he's gotten, as you can see, a small sampling of citizen involvement here for a national night out. So this year, we have up to eight events: Pelenconey Park, Boy Scout Headquarters over off of Grandview, Pacific Park, Adams Square Mini Park, Glendale High, Alex Theater, Verdugo Hills Hospital, and Spar Heights. So we've got something going in every section of town this year, which I can attribute a lot to Mr. Scott, and I'd like to give him an opportunity just to speak for a moment.
Councilman Draymond, it was almost a year ago that you stood at Ocean View and Honolulu and challenged or encouraged the community to get more involved in National Night Out, and I'm here tonight proudly to say that the community's responded. And per Mr. Gilkerson, we now have eight events this year with no budget and a lot of community support, and we expect it to get even bigger and better next year. We have partnered not only with a variety of organizations and agencies here in Glendale, but this year we've even ramped it up a little bit more to include the LA County Sheriff's Department and La Cañada and portions of Lacrosse Center up in there to also get involved. Our goal this year is to spread the council as thin as we can so that you can get to as many events as possible, and we couldn't do it without your support and the support of the police department. It's going to be a terrific year this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And as was mentioned earlier, we won't be having our normal 6 o'clock meeting. We've moved it to the afternoon so that all the council members can go out and participate. I have a proclamation for the group. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 4th, 2009, entitled National Night Out. The 26th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Glendale to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. The local community plays a vital role in assisting the Glendale Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Glendale and is supporting National Night Out 2009. Therefore, I Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim August 4th, 2009, as National Night Out. Encourage all Glendalians to support the 26th Annual Event and at the different locations in the Glendale area, including Verdugo Hills Hospital, Glendale High School, Adams Square Mini Park, Pelenconey Park, Pacific Community Center, and the Alex Theater between the hours of 6 and 8.
Well, on behalf of Mayor Quintero and the City of Glendale, I'd like to make this presentation to you, Ron, and to the rest of you as well. Thank you very, very much. This wouldn't have happened on this scale without you. That is for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
F3G is a proclamation designating August 14th, 2009, as Art Day 2009, and I'm not really sure who's accepting, but I know that Art Racklin is here from the Glendale Arts
the Glendale Arts Association. So if he can come up, and anyone else associated, please.
I have a proclamation. Since 1998, the 2nd Friday in August has been dedicated to the arts. Artists of all disciplines have been celebrated at festivals, libraries, art gift giving, families doing art together, and greeting card exchanges in Glendale, and at locations in North and South America, Europe, and Asia. Art uplifts the people of the world, whether through painting, plays, poems, stories, or songs. All nations benefit by celebrating and supporting the boundless creativity of artists. Art Day is a day for helping artists all over the world by purchasing their work or just letting them know you appreciate what they do. The arts play a vital role in the creation and enhancement of culture in Art Day. Symbolizes a milestone in the validation and recognition of the arts in the City of Glendale, setting a great example for other cities to follow. Therefore, I Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim Friday, August 14th, 2009, as Art Day. Encourage everyone to explore the holiday in a way that celebrates the artists who have made the most impact on them.
My name is Art Racklin. I'm the president of the Glendale Art Association, and I'm here to thank the council and the mayor for the proclamation. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations. It's not as colorful as this painting, but—
Very good. So I wanted to thank you too for honoring the artists with their own day. This is the fourth year in a row that the mayors have proclaimed Art Day. Every gentleman on the council has done it, starting with Dave Weaver when he was mayor. He started it all. Well, I started it, because I'm the founder of Art Day, Becky Mate. And for those of you who don't know what Art Day is, it's like Valentine's Day or Arbor Day, except instead of hugging your sweetheart or hugging a tree, you hug an artist—or by their work. I mean, artists have value, and this is a pat on the back to them. Behind me is a work of a Glendale artist, Marina Raymond, who had to go move her car. And the concept of Art Day— If I had a shop in Glendale or a cafe, I would be having a big Art Day sale. I would be selling Art Day mugs. Glendale, home of Art Day. I would be— I'd also be posting signs wishing people Happy Art Day, like this one. Says, "Celebrate Artists. We wish you and your family a Happy Art Day, 2nd Friday in August." And there are businesses in Glendale this year that are putting this in their windows. So everybody gets wished Happy Art Day. And as usual, anybody's welcome to come to my Art Day party, Art and Chocolate Party, 2nd Friday in August, 4:00 at 8:30 PM. It's on Lexington between Verdugo and Glendale. It's in the gardens behind an apartment. If you look it up on glendalearts.org, it's called Gardens at an Apartment. That's what the venue's called. But also, I have some Happy Art Day cards here. This one was made by the same artist that made this picture. And another one from a Burbank artist that attends Glendale, Alice Asmar. And I'm giving each of the council people two Art Day cards and a sign that they can post somewhere. Can you guys facilitate that? And I'm also giving the council members a rather tasty invitation to the Art Day party. So he and I, on behalf of all the artists in Glendale of any discipline, musicians, poets, everything else, wish you Happy Art Day, and thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Please.
Those for you guys, I think. Okay. Next.
Next is city council and staff comments.
Yes, go ahead.
We have staff person. Let's see, someplace. Oh, Don Nakamoto or Judith?
Yeah, I was going to wait till after—
Oh, Don? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've got the—
You're aware of it?
Well, go ahead. Why don't we have Mr. Nakamoto and Ms. Cernas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Don Nakamoto. I'm the director of the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board. With me is Judith Cernas. She's the manager of the Verdugo Job Center. We just wanted to let the viewers know about a job fair that's occurring tomorrow. And to put the importance of this in perspective, Glendale's current unemployment rate's about 9.9 percent. LA County is about 11.3 percent. I just went to an economic conference today by Beacon Economics, and they're saying that unemployment won't peak out probably until mid-2010. And for LA County, probably it'll reach about 13.2 percent. So that means that jobs are scarce, and it really underscores the importance of events like this that offer the community some opportunity for tangible employment opportunities. I'd like to turn it over to Judith to give some more details about the event tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, city council members, as Mr. Nakamoto mentioned, the Verdugo Job Center in partnership with the Employment Development Department will be hosting a job fair tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29th, from 9:00 to noon. We have confirmed over 15 employers who have full-time and part-time jobs, ranging from home care providers to security guards to retail. So we invite the Glendale community to come to the job fair dressed to impress, because employers will be interviewing at the spot and bringing plenty of resumes and prepared to fill out job applications. So we're very excited about this event. As Mr. Nakamoto mentioned, the economy is at one of its lowest points, but we do have employers out there who are hiring. So we encourage people to come who are looking for jobs, or if they know of anybody else, to inform the public. Thank you.
Can you give us the address?
1255 South Central Avenue in Glendale. And if you want additional information, you can call our main office line, which is 409-0476. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. May I remind the public that the unemployment rate—basically, they're measuring people who are receiving their checks. Once you stop receiving your checks, you seem to fall off the end of the earth. So I think the rate might be higher than posted. Thank you very much. Are there any city council comments? Mr. Zakarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, we decided to terminate our lobbying contract with David Church &amp; Associates. And that's well and good. That was the council's decision. I believe we said we would go out for an RFP. My concern is, though, that once Congress returns from their recess, they're going to be in the middle of the appropriations season. And I think it's critical that the city have an advocate during that time and up until we conduct an RFP and have our discussions and rate the firms that apply and decide on a new contract. So I'd like to place on the agenda—if I can get a second on that—the retention of David Church &amp; Associates until such time as we complete the RFP process and select a new federal lobbyist.
Mr. Draymond?
I believe that wasn't to terminate Mr. Church. It was to open up the process, just for clarification, to other lobbying firms. So you did mention that, Mr. Zakarian, but I just wanted to emphasize that it was not a termination of Mr. Church. It was not an automatic renewal of his contract, and instead asking that we include him and other firms. I would join you as a second. However, I would add to that, that I would like a date certain. As someone from the prevailing side on that vote, I would like someone—I would like a date certain by which we are going to hear a report or have presented to us other potential lobbying firms. And there are many, many, many of them that represent our neighboring cities and counties and other public agencies.
Okay. We'll put that on the agenda.
The second item—I seem to be bringing up past history—but this regards the vinyl window issue. I did get an email from one of the people who did speak about the vinyl windows. If you remember, I believe part of the process was that to get a permit for vinyl windows, you need to show that other homes on the block have vinyl windows also. Apparently, this person attempted to make that application and took pictures of other homes on the block that had vinyl windows. And I understand that those homes that were photographed are now under prosecution or code enforcement. That's what I heard. I know there are many sides to different stories, but I'd like to maybe hear back—we can get this on the agenda—as to what exactly we can do with that. It poses a dilemma for staff, for code enforcement, for the person making an application. So if we can put that on the agenda and decide how we're going to deal with those—you know, there's other words you can use for it, but that particular dilemma that the interested parties face, I think maybe we can smooth things out.
I believe Mr. Weaver confessed that night, so he's on camera with his—
Vinyl wood encased by him.
Wood encased by him.
In that email, talked about that, I think.
There wasn't—
Mr. Draymond?
Yes, I would just like to—I would just like to point out for the record that my colleague is asking for a vinyl determination on this matter.
In an effort of transparency.
Yes, exactly. Do we have a course of a second council member to place on the agenda?
Yes. If I have vinyl windows, yeah, put it on. I'm going to take pictures of my neighbors, too.
Any other comments?
No, I won't take mine out.
Oh, Mr. Gagnon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, as part of one of the directions you gave us on vinyl windows was to actually deal with windows such as the ones that people inherited from previous owners and ways of dealing with those. If you'd like us to not wait until we come back with a full window discussion again, including that, we could put this on the agenda at an earlier time to just deal with those issues. And on the particular case that Mr. Zakarian mentioned, we are doing an investigation, and we'll send you a memo about that.
Well, maybe we can start by sending Mr. Zakarian the memo and the rest of us and kind of take it from there, because I hate to piecemeal this whole issue. I'd prefer to do it all at one time and hear all sides and possibilities and approaches. Okay, any other comments? All right, that's it. Next, please.
Next is a consent calendar following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion A member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration, may do so before making such request for a motion as proposed.
No, I don't have any cards.
Mayor, I know the consent calendar.
Second.
Vote call.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Zakarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay, next, please.
Six would be oral communication.
All right, we're going to break oral communications into two segments. The first portion of oral communication is presentations only. I've got three cards. First is Kelly West, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Kelly West. I work with Citadel Environmental. We have been residents of Glendale since 1994. We've just recently acquired an 8,000-square-foot property at 1721 and 1725 Victory, which is kind of a transitioning neighborhood. And we wanted to let the city know that we have decided to LEED-certify the building. And if our research is correct, currently, there's only one building in the City of Glendale that is LEED-certified, and that's the Caltrans Building. It's LEED-certified as silver, and we're going to be LEED-certifying ours as gold. Included in the purchase price in the renovations, we'll be spending about $2.5 million on the project. And we're here to ask the city for their support in getting the project through and also in helping us. We have some concerns about the cleaning of the streets. I believe Victory is not scheduled to have actual street cleaning right now, so we're going to try to do some research on that. And also, tree cleaning and that type of stuff, just to keep the neighborhood clean. And we'd like to just let you know—oh, you all have a flyer, I'm sorry, too, and a pen which is fully recycled. We just wanted the city's support in this and to let you know that this project is happening in your city, and hopefully to be able to use this as a poster child for your green redevelopment.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to watching the construction activities. I'm sure Mr. Steve Cern and everyone else concerned with building and public works will go out of their way to accommodate you. It's very exciting.
Great. And we'll be having an open house in November, so we'll be back to let you all know when that is, and hopefully some of you can attend.
And for those members of the public, it's the United States Green Building Councils that sets the LEED standards. And in this case, they're going to go for the gold standard, which is the highest. So it's a large project, 35,000 square feet, so it's going to be very, very interesting. Solar panels, low-energy HVAC systems, low-flow faucets, et cetera. 75 percent recycled building materials used in the renovations. All the things we can do in our home renovations. Also landscaping with native plants. Very good. Thank you very much. Leon Mayer, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Friendsville Library and the library. I urge you to follow up on what was said earlier about the One Book One Glendale, but tonight, I'm going to try to make my comments brief. You've had a busy schedule. We have an event coming up August 20th. It's about Jane Austen. And anybody who's gone to the movies remembers Pride and Prejudice and other titles like that, famous movies. Jane Austen is the one, and a pure Jane Austen fan, you should be interested in our next event, August 20th. Lori Vieira Rigler is the author of Rude Awakenings of a Jane Austen Addict. And in this book, she takes a Jane Austen addict from the 18th, 19th century and brings her to the 21st century. And it's a very interesting proposition, what happens. Her first book, which we helped her—gave her the first start, became a bestseller. That book was The Confessions of a Jane Austen Addict, which took a 21st-century lady back to the 19th century. So she's very clever, and it's very interesting, and you have to be a Jane Austen addict to appreciate it. Chuck White, our library community director, made bookmarks for this flyer, and they're very cleverly done. And they'll be—they're available at all the libraries. Not going to take time to distribute them to the council members tonight, but I'll be back in the next week or two to do that. Anybody who's interested in these, raise your hand as I leave. It's— It's August 20th, 7:00 PM. It's free, and I want to take a second to compliment all the volunteer organizations who partake, not only in library, like Altrusia, but throughout Little League, the whole gamut of affairs. It makes me proud and inspires me to do the volunteer work that I do, and I know it inspires other people to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Wiseman.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero. I'm Sharon Wiseman from Far North Glendale, and I'm here to invite everyone to Crescent Valley Community Association's next meeting. It's a community meeting, August 26, starting at 7:00 PM, in the Dunsmore Park Community Room, 4700 Dunsmore Avenue, La Crescenta. And the main topic of discussion is the proposed 710 Tunnel Toll Road. And I know there are a lot of people here in the audience to discuss that later on on the agenda, so I wanted to make sure everybody knows this meeting is coming up, and we invite everyone to come join us and discuss how this might affect our valley, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. That'll close oral communications.
Next, at 7:00, is adoption of ordinances. 7A is ordinance providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale and for their compensation. GMA, Glendale Management Association, Fire Department BLS program. This was offered on July 21, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Are there any comments from the city council or staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move 7B.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
7B is an ordinance providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale and for their compensation. Glendale City Employees Association hourly Fire Department BLS program. This was also offered on July 21, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
I'd like to move 7B.
Second.
Are there any comments from city council or staff? Next, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
At season ordinance amending sections 2.72, .140, 13.08, .140, 13.12, .060, 13.44, .480, and 13.44, .500 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the payment and enforcement of water rates and electrical rates. This was also offered on July 21, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move 7C.
Second. Any comments from city council or staff? Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay, I would like to, we have a long agenda this evening and 25 speakers, so I would like to move 9A up so that those people who are, I'm sorry, 9B, excuse me, 9B. We have a number of people here who should be able to dispense with this. Please read 9B into the record.
D as in?
E.
E as in boy. 9B is city attorney regarding proposed amendment and restatement of Series 2005-B-1 note Verdugo Hills Hospital revenue refunding bonds, Verdugo Hills Hospital, Series 1994, in a principal amount of up to $5 million. At B1 is resolution authorizing the amendment and restatement of Series 2005-B-1 note. That's it.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a very brief introduction into this matter. On July 14, you approved the assignment and transfer of a note on these bonds from Wells Fargo Bank to the new lender, Ross Energy LLC. And before you tonight is a resolution for the purpose of approving the amendment and restatement of existing tax-exempt revenue bonds for the Verdugo Hills Hospital. Verdugo Hills Hospital is a qualified health facility under the city's Health Facility Revenue Bond Law. The principal amount is $5 million, and the maturity date of the note on the bonds is January 1, 2013. This transaction does not constitute any obligation or debt of the city's general fund, nor does it impose any liabilities by reason of this transaction. Neither the faith nor credit, nor the taxing power of the city is pledged to the payment of the principal or the premium or interest on these bonds. So, this transaction is anticipated to be completed on July 31 this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions. That really constitutes my report. I wanted to just let you know that in the audience tonight is Mr. Leonard Labella, the CEO of Verdugo Hills Hospital, as well as the hospital's legal counsel in this matter, Mr. Richard Souchard, and they're available to answer any questions you may have.
I don't believe they'll have any questions. I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. I'll close the public hearing. And once again, Mr. Howard, let's reassure the public at large that the City of Glendale is not obligated for this fine endeavor that Verdugo Hills is about to undertake.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Essentially, just trying to distill it down to its summary form, we are a conduit under our code and under state law to allow hospital districts to issue tax-exempt, financing tax-exempt bonds. No taxpayer monies, no general fund monies are pledged, nor are they accessible should the bonds ever go into default or there become any other issues or problems relating to that. So, the taxpayers are not at risk.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move 9B, one.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay, let's go through a couple of other, basically, formalities so we can get to the action items. Let's read 9C into the record.
9C is a fire chief regarding weed abatement charges for 2008, 2009. A C1 is a resolution confirming weed abatement charges.
Want to close the hearing?
Is there a hearing for this also?
Yes, the hearing. These are all hearings.
Public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards. I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, move 9C, one.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, and we'll do 9A.
9A is director of public works. This is continued from July 21, 2009 regarding brand boulevard maintenance, District Number One for fiscal year '09-10. At A1 is a resolution determining a special assessment rate to be levied against real property within the maintenance district.
Public hearing on this?
Yes.
I will open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards, so I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, move 9A, one.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay, let's move to 8A. Action items, and before he, well, go ahead and read into the record, Mr.
8A is director of public works regarding State Route 710 Gap Closure Project. And A1 is a resolution opposing tunnel alternative for the proposed gap closure for the SR710 freeway between I-10 and I-210 SR134 freeways. At 2 is a resolution supporting continued study of the tunnel alternative for the proposed gap closure of the SR710 freeway between I-10 and the I-210 SR134 freeways. And 3 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Okay. Is there anyone who hasn't filled out a speaker card that would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Thank you very much. We won't be taking any more cards. Mr. Starburg.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing hands in the audience for some reason. Excuse me. Yeah. Let me, let me go to Steve Zern, Director of Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are returning to you tonight for further input and discussion on the issue of the State Route 710 gap closure and specifically the tunnel feasibility study and tunnel alternative. I say return to you because several weeks ago, staff from Caltrans and their consultants came before you to give you a presentation on that tunnel technical study and feasibility study. I think it's probably safe to say that maybe more questions were raised than answered at that particular presentation. Thus, we were asked to bring this back for further discussion, along with giving you the option to take a formal position for or against the project or to direct staff in some other manner, such as taking no formal position at this time, waiting for further information and analysis to be done. The study, as you'll recall, was looking at five potential tunnel routes to close the gap where the 710 currently ends in East Los Angeles, bringing that traffic up to either directly the 210 or to the 210 through the 2 freeway, or the 605 is one of the number five alternatives. I'm not going to go over a lot of detail, because I don't think there was a lot of detail given to you about, about the particular feasibility study. I think there was a focus by staff to tell you at the time that there was, all of the effort was for seismic and geotechnical-type work. I think there was a lot of questions about other parts and other aspects of what the impacts of this particular project may bring to the city of Glendale and other communities in this area. I will tell you, there's a couple of additional items. One, we included some information on a traffic study that was conducted by ITERIS for the Southern Californian Association of Governments. That was released in May, I believe. It's out right now in a preliminary draft form. They're seeking comments and input on that. We have a representative from ITERIS here tonight, Mr. Davidian, who worked on that, so if you have any specific questions about that particular report, he may be able to shed some more light on that. In addition, I left at your seats tonight what has transpired recently, where Caltrans staff has issued what they call Task Order Number Five, which is some additional work that they're planning to do in the area of noise, pollution, traffic. A lot of those issues that many of you here raised with them previously, but that at the time, they said, weren't going to be studied in depth at the current time. So, there's been apparently some change of heart. This, too, is out for, for comment. I know you didn't have time to read it. We just put it together, and I wanted to get a copy over to you. With that, again, we have representative from ITERIS. Mr. Mitchell's here from our traffic engineering staff, who also sits on the technical committee. Unfortunately, I wish we could elaborate more on the project beyond what you heard from Caltrans, but that's, that's not real possible for us, because that's about the extent of what we're hearing as well. I think tonight, we wanted to bring it back, let you get input from the public, raise questions, possibly send this back for more information, or to take a position on the project as it stands. So, with that.
Okay, Ms. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. I'm a little confused by the wording of the resolutions, or at least by the alternatives that we're being asked to give input on. On the agenda item, alternative one is resolution for opposing the tunnel alternative for the proposed gap closure, which sounds to me like if we are adopting that first resolution, it, it sounds like we would be saying, we're opposing the tunnel alternative, but we would be open to, let's say, a highway alternative or an above-ground alternative. So, I'm a little bit unclear about what we're actually being asked to weigh in on. Is it on a tunnel? Is it on the gap closure itself?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I drafted the resolution because of the specific issue that was going to come before you, and that's the tunnel alternative. Certainly, you can discuss the entire universe of potential options for closing the gap closure, whether it be the, the long-running discussion of a possible above-ground freeway or grade freeway. This was essentially intended to be the, to focus on, just the tunnel alternative. But again, should you desire to take it further than that, you have the option to do that. And one way you can get there is whether we change the resolution language or on the third item, action item, that's motion to direct staff.
So, just, just to clarify in my mind, because I'm not as familiar with this as, as Mr. Najarian on the MTA, so whether or not there's going to be a gap closure, that's outside of our discussion or not?
That can certainly be part of your discussion. Right now, the focus, as I understood it, and Mr. Zern can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, was at the, at the last meeting that the tunnel proposal was discussed, when staff came and provided you that, their technical information about what they were doing and reaching out to the public with their meetings, was to bring that back for further discussion by the city council.
So, in terms of what Caltrans is asking for input on, is it the tunnel alternative or is it the prospect of a gap closure in general? Because I think there's a very important distinction in terms of what we will be hearing from the public tonight.
Mr. Najarian.
Let me just interrupt on one point. Senator Gil Sadio authored a bill which was passed, which indicated and required that the only route for any connection between the 710 and any of the other terminus shall be a subsurface route. So, the tunnel is the only alternative currently permitted under state law.
Right, but I'm still wondering whether, it, it sounds to me, from the way the resolutions read, that what we're asking the public to give input on and what we're expected to give, give input on, is, is it going to be a tunnel or something else? As opposed to, do we want a 710 gap closure at all, or don't we? And they're two very different questions, and I think we'll get very different input. If it's the first, that you're being asked to give input on, is it a tunnel or is it something above ground, probably nobody here, very few people here are interested in that conversation. The conversation that I think the public's interested in it is, do we want a connector built to connect the 710 to the 210 or not? And that's something very different from the resolutions that are here. And I want to be sure that what, what I'm going to be talking about and what the public's going to be talking about and what Caltrans wants to hear is all copacetic. And I'm really unclear at this point about what Caltrans expects to hear from us, what our scope of input has to do with, and exactly what we're being asked to weigh in on tonight. If it's technically, can a tunnel be built? That's a very different kind of conversation, I think. I don't think there are, most people are here to really talk about that. So, if that's not what they're here to talk about, is Caltrans interested in what they are here to talk about or not? And I don't see that as an, as an agenda item in front of me.
Mr. Starburg.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Friedman, you can weigh in on any of those things if the council so chooses. I think the staff has looked at this and has standpoint what's currently being studied is the feasibility of a tunnel. But if the council wants to broaden that to exactly the issues as you've described, then you can do that at this point. Or, or not weigh in at all and wait to gather more information and do more evaluation.
And, and let me add, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. Caltrans hasn't asked us to do this. They're, they're not asking for this. We're, we're doing this to, as a result, my thought was, as a result of some, some unanswered questions, some concerns that were expressed, quite a bit of concern expressed on the part of the community, and council's request that we bring this back to talk about it further. This is certainly not something Caltrans has asked to do or sanctioned and probably doesn't want to hear it at all, but.
Well, then, I'm just concerned about what we have in front of us in terms of suggested resolutions. From the way it reads from the agenda item, whether or not it's a tunnel or we're, or people are for or against a tunnel alternative, is, again, it's a different question than closing the gap on. And so, I think we just need to be aware, if we pass a resolution tonight or we talk about potential resolutions, that we're very clear about what we're passing, so that the message doesn't go back to Caltrans, for instance, saying, well, Glendale's, and I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but let's say hypothetically that the message is, number one, a resolution for opposing the tunnel alternative for the gap closure. Well, that's very different from maybe going back and saying, we don't want to close the 210 at all, so we'd have to come up with something different. So, I'm just putting that out there, that if we're going to have that discussion, that we need to be flexible or careful in terms of how we word this and.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Friedman, you are not restricted by the language in the resolutions to the discussion involving the gap closure and any alternative. Even though state law may restrict what can be done, you're, you are not restricted in your conversation. The agenda item is, quote, "Director of Public Works for State Route 710 Gap Closure Projects." The resolutions are there for you to take a stand based upon not only the suggested language that's there, but also if you want to modify them. And likewise, there is a motion to direct staff, should you feel that either the resolutions themselves or even modifications to them don't suit the majority's purpose after hearing from the public of where you want to go with it. So, the flexibility is there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Weaver.
I just want to comment, it's been 30 more years that this has been talked about, is if you go to the end of the 210 freeway south, it stops the middle of nowhere. Obviously, the connection was going to happen. I don't think it's about the tunnel at all. It's the impacts to La Crescenta if the tunnel is done, whether it's tunnel, above-ground, whatever direction, is the secondary impacts noise-wise north end. I don't know anybody here that would object to a tunnel, where the main impact would be the, the air quality from the ventilation stacks. be the the air quality from the ventilation stacks in the tunnel coming out, if it would pollute the air. Other than that, I don't care. It's what comes out of that end, the northern end.
I understand that.
So, yeah, I just clarify, I don't think anybody here cares. Tunnel, surface, so what? What happens?
There's a lot of issues, tunnel versus surface as well. Trust me.
I know.
It's not just the the traffic impacts.
We're sitting here, the main thing is what's going to happen in the upper end. Yeah, if it's surface on down from where it ends at the five now, yeah, tremendous, because of all the real estate that's there, that all the homes, everything will be destroyed. So if it's going to happen anywhere, it's going to be a tunnel. That's pretty obvious. That's why they're standing for the tunnel alternative.
Any other comments or questions from the staff? Okay, we'll go to the public. I have approximately 27 cards. Try to stick to the subject at hand. We'll start with Krista Smiley, followed by Barbara Messina.
Hi, good evening. My name is Krista Smiley. I'm a Montrose resident and honorable mayor and council members. Just briefly, because there's a lot of people behind me, I'm, of course, opposed to the 710. And now I'm more confused than I was when I came in the door. So I think a lot more steady. I'm not, I don't want a tunnel. You know, I know that Southern California, lived here all my life, I've lived all over LA, grow up. I now have, the past 20 years, my family, we've lived in Montrose, love it. But I know this issue like a lot of us do. And there is a problem with our traffic, and it is something that has to be addressed. I mean, I drive over the Grapevine several times a month to visit my older children. And, you know, we all know what a rough ride that is. But I really think a lot of thought, a lot of thought, in not being rushed into any decisions that impact not just La Cressena, Montrose, but all of Southern California. I mean, it's a domino effect here, and your decision is really important, that you sit down and really, really think about it. A tunnel, to me, environmentally, is just crazy. You know, I don't really understand it. I'm not an engineer. I personally look at it, as just a resident, that, you know, growing up, we heard there, when La Cressena, when they built the freeway up here, people lost their homes. You know, I sympathize with people that live in the area that might have lost their home, but they should have built it years ago, the freeway, you know? So that's my personal thought, and no tunnel, and maybe some other more rail, some other more practical way of building and figuring out the traffic situation for SoCal. Thank you very much.
Barbara Messina, followed by Tom King.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. My name is Barbara Messina. I am City Councilwoman in the city of Alhambra and Third Vice President of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. I conch chair Councilwoman Friedman's frustrations. I have personally been involved on this particular project for 22 years of my tenure as an elected official on this particular project. It is truly a regional problem, and that's how we have to look at it. I want to correct the gentleman who said it ends in East Los Angeles. It ends in Alhambra, and it has for 40 years. We have lived with that. It was never intended to end in Alhambra and end in Pasadena. It was intended to be a connection to our freeway system. I currently sit on SCAG's Regional Council Board and have been on transportation for eight years, and our main focus is looking at regional solutions to our problems. And this particular gap is the remaining, sole remaining gap that SCAG has to deal with, and it is one of the priority items in their regional transportation plan. And I'm asking you tonight that if you still have questions and doubts, which you obviously do, hold off making a decision until you do. There is no project on the books yet, so you have no idea right now how it's going to affect Glendale. And until that is the case, I don't think it's fair for you to make a decision one way or another. I can only impress upon you, Mr. Najarian, your Chair of MTA, we look to you for regional solutions and regional leadership, and this is truly a regional problem. You will hear from other members of elected cities. So that is my hope, that you will really take this into consideration on the regional importance of connecting these. We have a freeway system now that doesn't operate at its maximum efficiency because you have that missing gap. Freeways cannot flow interactively, so that is the main issue and concern that you should be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom King, followed by Eugene Sun.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero. I'm Tom King. I'm the President of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, which represents 31 cities located to the east of you, all the way out to Clermont, down into Monterey Park, all the way out to Pomona. These 31 cities are asking for your support to close the gap on the 710 freeway. The 710 freeway gap closure has been supported by the MTA, Caltrans, SCAG for a number of years. Now, it's estimated that this project will eliminate over one ton of emissions per day. It will affect the regional congestion waiting time by 6.2 million commute hours. That's 6.2 million hours a year. Now, last week, I spoke with Mike Tin from the city of South Pasadena, and Mike assured me that they were going to work with Caltrans to work towards a solution of this problem. And the technological problems of air pollution, which I think was Councilmember Weaver mentioned, can be overcome by technology.
Hey, excuse me. Look, I'm going to have you removed if I continue to hear you speak and make comments when speakers are are at the podium, okay? It's going to be a long night, so please try to contain yourself.
Mayor, I'm going to shorten my comments. I just want to say that I think that we need to look at this regionally. It's like having a coronary bypass that's needed. This, our community, the people that live east of you are suffering because of a lack of connectivity. But I want to tell you, talk about your town. I have some connection to your city. I met my wife in the city where the Galleria was. I bought my Dodge Surfer van at Glendale Dodge, and she bought her Camaro at Alan Gwynn. Alex Gwynn, is it? Anyway, it's a beautiful city, and I remember back when the freeways were being put through here and the difficulties with the 210 and the difficulties with the 2. But imagine how this, you have a beautiful city, but imagine how your city would look if the freeways ended at your city limits and dumped all the traffic on Grand Boulevard or Colorado. And that's what the cities of Alhambra and Monterey Park are facing. Now, I'm going to give you a little personal perspective. My father, 93 years old, died a little over a year ago, March, and I tried to get to him, and it was his time, so I didn't make it. I was stuck on Fremont Avenue in Alhambra for over an hour in traffic that was going both directions, bumper to bumper. And when I was sitting on that freeway, the thing that went through my mind is, my God, what if somebody had to take an ambulance to a hospital? They couldn't get there from here. So as leaders, as elected officials, we're charged with making a difference. And I think you can be, show your leadership in making a difference in joining with the other communities east of here and looking at this as a regional problem, a regional solution. Because I will tell you, if the solution and problem existed in this city, I'd be here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Sun, followed by Clyde Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Eugene Sun, Mayor of City of San Marino. I come before you to state the City Council's unanimous support of the completion of the 710 connector. As you know, San Marino has historically opposed the 710 for decades. Why have changed of mind? Because if you look at big picture and with advancement of the technology, I think it's about time that a 710 connector be completed. Even though San Marino is marginally affected by the 710, but I think it should alleviate the congestion on freeway 5, 134, 2. And it will make the freeway system in Southern California more functional. So with that, I hope with your collective wisdom, you are arrive at the conclusion as ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Clyde Williams, followed by Richard Schneider.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. 30-year resident of Northeast LA, 25 years working around Caltrans. I have 20 years of experience in Parsons Corporation Engineering and Sciences and Environmental Sciences. I have designed, planned, constructed tunnels, including the RTD, MTA, Red Line Phase One, downtown LA. The problem is not the tunnel. The problem is making the tunnel. Now, of the three most probable practical routes, one of which is Verdugo and Eagle Rock, and it's the portal there, consider the impacts of removing 3 million cubic yards of tunnel muck, the ventilation from five miles of tunnels times two. You are being baited, and it will then be switched. Caltrans has done it before. They told us, we'll build a trench through 400 houses in El Sereno District. Supposedly, Ed Reyes has opposed it. Jose Huizar and Antonio have recommended all of the portal be south of valley in Alhambra. Basically, let those who benefit the most endure the most. What benefit is it for you if you have the interchange at Verdugo and SR2? I don't think it will be of much benefit to you to have that there, especially during the construction. Yes, they can clean the air, except for one thing. It costs a lot of money to clean the air. I can make it good enough. However, have they ever mentioned what happens when there's a fire? No. Caltrans has avoided various issues that are particular concerns to road tunnels. They say, oh, no problem with fire. Oh, don't talk to the French, the Italians, and the Swiss regarding road tunnel fires. There are problems. Who's going to respond? Well, whoever's at the portal. Who's fire trucks have to go in to the tunnel and bring out the bodies and the remains? So I would highly recommend that you oppose 710 now as a tunnel, surface, or elevated. And then let Caltrans prove to you that they can do it to the best that they can and to your benefit. Let those who benefit the most endure the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Schneider, followed by Timo Arjani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Richard Schneider. I'm the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of South Pasadena. Excuse me. I'm representing the city, so I'll confine my comments to the city's position and not my personal position. I come here with two purposes in mind. One is, I would like to urge you to oppose the extension of the 710 by any route, whether it be on the surface, cut and cover, or through a tunnel. And second, I would like to explain the City of South Pasadena's position, because I think there's been some misunderstanding of it recently. The governing resolution of the City of South Pasadena was passed in 2003 and was reiterated in 2007. It was essentially the identical resolution. We only added two different words, and those were the words "route neutral." And that was because Congressman Adam Schiff supplied some money to the study of the technical feasibility, and he insisted that, since this is a new project, that the slate be wiped clean and that you take a fresh look at it. So the, I would like to read you the the portion of our of our resolution, which is really important. I'll skip the "whereas's." Suffice it to say that the City Council of South Pasadena has opposed this extension of Highway 7 and now 710 since 1947. Section 1 of our resolution is, "The City, the South Pasadena City Council does hereby oppose the proposed 710 freeway extension through the communities of South Pasadena, El Sereno, and Pasadena, and wholeheartedly supports the fiscally and environmentally responsible alternative to the multimode low-built transportation proposal." That has been our position, it has always been our position, that we are opposed to the extension of the 710 by any means. The second part of this resolution concerns the tunnel. And this one reads the following. "The South Pasadena City Council does not oppose sound root-neutral research," and those are the two words that were inserted, "of a bored tunnel alternative to the construction of a surface freeway in the proposed Route 710 corridor. The ultimate position of the South Pasadena City Council will depend on the integrity of the research to enable assessment of a bored tunnel alternative's benefits and costs, both social and fiscal, which a bored tunnel alternative might produce, with the proviso that this statement does nothing to compromise litigation in place and does not waive any future rights." And I can leave this with your city clerk as, for you to look at if you need to. It's important to note that in this resolution, it says "does not oppose." These words were chosen very carefully by the City Council and by our special legal counsel. It does not say the South Pass supports a tunnel. It does not say South Pass supports a study of a tunnel. It does not even say that South Pasadena is neutral. It says, "We do not oppose sound research." And that's all it says. And that's all that our governing resolution says. It is in opposition to the 710, and we do not oppose sound research for the tunnel.
Hey, please try to wrap it up. Let's...
Okay, I'm sorry. I will very quickly go through Senate Bill 545.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I'm not going to read it. I'm just going to tell you what...
No, that's all right. Just submit it to the clerk. I can perhaps read a little bit later. Thank you for coming, sir. Timo Arjani, followed by Bob Huddy.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Timo Arjani. I'm a resident of Glendale and a voter in Glendale. So I'm speaking as a member of Glendale, not as an engineer, but as a resident here. I would respectfully suggest that you vote in favor of the 710 freeway going through and completing its course. I may also suggest that any vote to bring the 710 extension to Glendale should not be supported. On the other hand, if you want to postpone the decision till more traffic study has been done, that should be fine. As was mentioned earlier, there was a study done a couple of months ago, and the voters in Glendale, by a majority of 2.4 to 1, accepted and proposed that, yes, the 710 freeway extension should go on. The reduction in traffic would be tremendously beneficial for Glendale residents. The air pollution and other things mentioned would also be beneficial. And I think you've heard the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Huddy, followed by Margaret Hammond.
My name's Bob Huddy. I'm a retired employee of SCAG. I'm a consultant in transportation with over 35 years in transportation business. I'm very knowledgeable of this particular study that was done. I was the project manager for the tunnel study when I retired from SCAG last year. I'm now in private practice. The tunnel is a longstanding, is a solution to a very longstanding gap closure. We've had this gap closure since 1953, when the state route was adopted. It's almost as old as I am. It's creating numerous problems for the cities along the way. Alhambra has serious problems with over 100,000 cars trying to access the stubs. Pasadena has nearly 60,000 cars today accessing the stubs. We have major gridlock in Pasadena because of the lack of completion of this critical link. This critical link, the tunnel alternative, has been looked at now for about seven years. It has brought in a number of foreign firms who have built successful tunnels, the M30 Tunnel around Madrid, tunnels on the north and south end of Madrid that are similar to this. The Ring Road around Paris through an environmentally sensitive community called Versailles was completed recently and open. So the tunnel technology is well-established. Our friends... Our friends in Russia are building a four-mile tunnel, fifty-three feet in diameter, on the Ring Road around Moscow. Tunnels are feasible. They're done all over the world. Yes, ask the firemen from Spain and Switzerland and France to come and identify their fire suppression technologies, their management and control technologies. This will be a toll facility. It will be paid for by tolls of users that will mitigate the traffic congestion tolling similar to what is used on the ninety-one and the fifteen down in San Diego County. You'll pay a higher toll at Russia or in order to maintain the traffic flow and minimize the impacts. The air quality. I spent fifteen years on the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee. When I started, we had no regulations on trucks until the Coalition for Clean Air won the lawsuit in 1993. By 2015, when construction for this project starts, we will have over a ninety-seven percent reduction in truck emissions, a major concern to many people along the route. The technology is there. It's working, just like our cars today are ninety-nine-point-nine percent cleaner than they were in 1970, when we completed the Route Two, after a great fight. And many of the cities here today come into your assistance in that fight to get the funding out of the state legislature. So I urge you to postpone action on this. There is no action required to oppose this route. There's no action required to oppose this tunnel. This tunnel will have to go through further feasibility study. It will have to go through further environmental analysis. And if at such time you find it not to your advantage to relieve traffic on the Two and the I Five and have traffic divert around the City of Glendale, then you can take action at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Richard Cross.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I have, and I still feel, that anything that would affect the quality of life for the residents of La Canada, Montrose, La Crescita should be opposed. Because if you end up with all that additional traffic, and I don't know how many of you travel, the five, I just, I traveled it this weekend. And again, it's the trucks, the trucks that are the bane of the whole existence of, and we know that they're necessary. But why couldn't there be a better system from Long Beach, a rail system of some kind? Put those trucks on at the ports down there. And instead of using them, putting them on the freeways, put them on the rails. It would be much easier. I mean, they could take several at a time, rather than trucks spewing the diesel all along. You've got ten, I don't know how many, one carrier could take at a time, one rail, I have no idea, one rail car. But it's got to be better than all those trucks spewing out the fumes. And also ending up, in La Canada alone, in that area, there are ten or twelve schools right there. And when you live within the distance of that freeway, which my daughter happens to live there, it's unbelievable at times. The smog is unbelievable from the traffic. And if that seven-ten, whether it's tunnel or surface, ends up spewing out all that traffic, it's going to be unbelievable. So I definitely feel that, while I know it's something that has to be taken care of, let's look at other things in addition to finishing the closure. Let's look at something that will take care of all that, those trucks that will end up coming, either going east or west on the two-ten. Thank you.
Richard Cross, followed by Mary Ann Perata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I am a former city councilman from Boulder, Colorado, had two terms, and I understand pretty much what you're going through, not particularly with this situation that you have here, which is very complex. It seems to me it's very clear that we don't have enough information to make a decision at this particular point in time. And I would suggest to you that you pass and wait for more clearly defined research that will be coming along. I just think that was the best thing for everybody to know. Thank you for the work and what you've been doing, and that's the subject of the substance of mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Ann Perata, followed by Glenn Duncan.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Perata. I'm from the City of South Pasadena, and I've been fighting against the second freeway in our town of over three-point-four square miles for over forty years. The air pollution studies at SC and UCLA have determined that children of Los Angeles County have lost fifteen percent of their lung function due to mobile sources. In fact, the children living close to the ports of Long Beach and the port of LA use inhalers every day. They even have inhalers at their schools. They're breathing in the diesel emissions along the seven-ten freeway. In a recent LA Times opinion piece, I don't know if you saw it, I'll quote it. I'll quote, "Smog, it turns out, can have devastating effects on, not on just lungs, but on hearts, brains, and fetal development." Quote, "In fact, the UCLA Institute of the Environment concluded that the health problems of premature births, low birth rates, birth defects, respiratory diseases were of such magnitude as to require drastic changes to motor vehicles and transportation systems over the next decade. The seven-ten freeway is designated as a corridor of national significance to promote international trade. Forty percent of the cargo that comes out of the ports goes to Middle America. So they're going through our urban communities to get to Middle America. The City of Glendale itself is circled by three freeways today. If this tunnel is built, there will be three-hundred-thousand cars and trucks today that are not in those tunnels, in the portals now. Thirty-five to forty percent of these trucks and cars will be diverted because they will refuse to pay the toll, the six-dollar tolls, and they will then continue on surface streets. From the one-thirty-four, your streets impacted from these diverted cars and trucks will probably congest Broadway, Harvey, Glen Oaks, Colorado, and San Fernando Road, and Fremont in Alhambra. South Pasadena has spent over two million dollars over the last forty years to protect ourselves from the effects of this freeway, because the original freeway is a surface freeway, which would bisect us north and south, and the Pasadena bisects us east and west. So we'd be drawn and quartered, so we've been fighting for our life. I urge you to oppose the seven-ten freeway today and save the City of Glendale from spending millions of dollars in the next twenty years to protect your town and your citizens' health. Thank you. If you want a copy of this, I'll be glad to give it to you."
Glenn Duncan, followed by Sarah Enslo.
My name is Glenn Duncan. I'm representing the South Pasadena Preservation Foundation, that is one of eight co-litigants against the extension of the seven-ten in 1998. Those co-litigants were the National Trust for Historic Preservation, California Preservation Foundation, the Sierra Club, LA Conservancy, Pasadena Heritage, the City of South Pasadena, South Pasadena Unified School District, and my organization, the Preservation Foundation of South Pasadena. Because of that lawsuit and Judge Prager's ruling that the benefits did not justify the devastation, the Federal Highways rescinded the rod, the record of decision approving of that route. And that was later also, the California Transportation Commission withdrew their support of it also. And since that time, there's been no seven-ten project on the books. And still, even with twenty-five years of, and four copies of, four drafts of the EIR, it still has not been demonstrated that any connection of this route is going to improve traffic in the San Gabriel Valley. Number two, now that they're proposing the tunnel, there is no sensible study that demonstrates that it will reduce traffic times. And most important, perhaps, it has not been demonstrated that the project is financially feasible. SCAG has estimated eleven-point-eight billion dollars, and a private investor then would have to recover that money in tolls. So how many people are going to pay seven, eight, nine dollars to travel four, five, six miles? Financial feasibility needs to be demonstrated before an EIR is done. They need to demonstrate that this is actually going to solve a problem, not exacerbate a problem, before we go to an EIR. They're now trying to push forward in this draft number five. They're trying to push forward a quick and easy EIR and avoid it and push it through. And I think anything you can do to stop that and to halt that so that that doesn't happen would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Enslo.
Councilmember.
Robbie Hunter, followed by Nat Reed. Robbie Hunter, followed by Nat Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Robbie Hunter. I'm here representing the building and construction trades of Los Angeles and Orange County. Good evening, council members. You know, the Building Trade Council represents a hundred-and-forty thousand tradesmen and apprentices in the Los Angeles area, over five-hundred of whom live in the City of Glendale. We are here tonight to ask for your support for the continuing of the study. And it is only a study. It is not the building. It is a study of the feasibility of this project and possible funding of the completion of the seven-ten. As you probably know, the seven-ten completion project has been under discussion for over thirty years. And while the traffic has continued to build and pollution from stalled traffic has continued to increase, and business has been continued to suffer because of the artificial roadblock that feels to complete the freeway has created. Every city pollution in the area has provided evidence that polling data that agree that the time has come to complete the seven-ten, and we agree with that. The time is right to reduce the traffic congestion, reduce pollution, and climate improvement. The traffic roadblock has created so much damage to our family and to our business. The time is also right to create jobs in construction and complete the long-needed connection for permanent jobs that these will provide for businesses who will be more efficient. We are asking for you to vote against the motion on tonight to oppose the seven-ten and to support the motion to endorse the tunnel alternative to complete the seven-ten freeway. Thank you for your time. And I got to say, it was a very enjoyable meeting. It was great to see the kids in here and to see what the city does with its citizens. Mr. Nigerian, I got to say, I was at your, when you chaired the MTA, MTA meeting, and it, you got your hands full. Thank you very much, guys.
Nat Reed, followed by Erica Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. You've been very patient tonight. This is a subject with so many aspects, and I appreciate your time in plowing through that. I'm Nat Reed. I live in Glendale. First moved to Glendale in 1957. I'm also chair of the seven-ten freeway coalition. One of the alternatives that Caltrans is looking at, and has been the subject of these tunnel study presentations that have been made, which is what triggered this, is an alternative as part of the, quote, "route-neutral" perspective that would build the seven-ten to Glendale. This is a crazy, crazy idea. And all of the meetings in La Crescita, person after person has come to the mic and said, what can they be thinking? This is, this is just Alice in Wonderland, and I agree with that. And I would urge you to take a position against building the seven-ten to Glendale. That's the most direct effect that is being considered now, and let's get that off the table. All of us can agree on that. I would urge you not to oppose the general seven-ten, because there's no project on the table. I think we need those traffic data, we need the environmental studies to find out what the impact of whatever it is that's proposed will be on our city. And I think it's premature to take a position without a project. Also, we voters of Glendale are very intelligent people. We're the ones who chose the best possible city council. We were surveyed in a poll, and I brought, I know that you're familiar with the poll, but I brought, I brought copies to, other copies to share, which showed that a scientific poll asking just, asking the straight-up question, do you oppose or support completion of the seven-ten freeway? Two-point-four to one, two-and-a-half to one were in favor of that. I've got the, I've got the full study. If you have skepticism about it, I would urge you to share this with poll authorities, poll experts of any polling firm to judge this. Or take your own poll. It will, it will come out two-and-a-half to one. So I would urge you to oppose the idea of building a freeway from Cal State LA toward Glendale. Crazy, crazy idea. And, and then wait for a project and facts in which to make your final decision. I will leave these for you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your, for your time.
Turn it in to the clerk. Erica Golden, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Erica Golden. I am a Glendale resident. I live just west of the Galleria, next to Fire Station Twenty-One, and I saw several familiar faces. I walked in here today, living next to the fire department. I'm self-employed. I am in business-to-business sales, and I spend a lot of my time every day on those highways, oftentimes stuck in traffic while trying to reach my clients. Completion of the seven-ten freeway will alleviate traffic on the Two and the Five. Studies have proven this. That's less time for people like me and you, that's less time we have to spend on the highways stuck in traffic. That will alleviate so many of the city's problems. Please consider all your options and think of the citizens of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Wiseman, followed by Al Hoffman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman, resident of far north Glendale. I've attended quite a few meetings in the last several months regarding the proposed project, and I'm absolutely amazed tonight to finally hear the word "toll" spoken in public. Yes, folks, this is going to be a toll road. Let's stop saying that this tunnel is closing a gap in the freeway system. There is nothing free about it. It is adding a toll road segment to the existing freeway system. It's going to cost at least one billion dollars per mile to build this tunnel. The lowest estimate I've ever heard for construction cost is six billion. I believe we heard eleven-point-eight billion tonight. So, you know, Senator Dirksen said, a billion here, a billion there. Pretty soon, it starts adding up to real money. The federal government does not have six billion dollars to build this project, neither does the state of California. So the financing behind it, and I passed out a document to you, a product of the Financial Planning Charrette that was held at the USC Keston Institute in December of 2007. This document is only fourteen pages long, but I strongly urge you to read it if you haven't read it already, because it lays out the scheme by which this project is planned to be financed, and the fact that it's going to be run as a private-public partnership and a toll road. I would also ask you to take a look at Appendix B, which lists the people who participated in this financial planning charrette. This will give you an idea of who some of the key players are behind this effort, players from outfits like JP-- Players from outfits like JP Morgan that have bailout money that they want to invest in infrastructure, and representatives from construction companies like Grupo ACS, the large Spanish construction firm that builds dams and high-speed rail systems and highway tunnels all over the world. Now, a planning charrette, as I'm sure Mr. Hagani would be able to tell you, is supposed to include all stakeholders. And this one most patently did not include all stakeholders, and so I strongly urge you to read this document. Some other things I might want to mention before I go. The 2 freeway was originally planned to terminate in Beverly Hills, not terminate in Silverlake where it just ends there on the street. I think this is outrageous. When are we going to close this gap in the 2 freeway so us people in Glendale can drive a freeway directly to Beverly Hills? I would also like to ask, what freeway project in the history of Southern California has ever reduced pollution and congestion, let's say, one year after it was completed? The 105? I don't think so. The 210 completion out to San Bernardino? No. That's increased our traffic. It's increased our pollution, and it's increased the noise in the Crescenta Valley. I would also, in closing, ask you to consider what happens when the gas prices go up with the toll roads in Orange County. They didn't meet their revenue projections, and they had to come to the taxpayers to ask for a bailout. So please consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Hoffman, followed by Laura Lasso.
Mayor Quintero, council staff, Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. Well, I'm a Glendale native and traveled all these freeways around here. And I loathe every time I have to go down to 5 to get around to go over to Orange County when my daughter was going to Long Beach State. It would have been great if I could have just kept going on the 710 down to connect to the 710, but we have to go around through the 5, or we go down to 2 and go trucking through Glendale Boulevard, past Echo Lake, and onto one of the freeways down there. Freeways make sense. Now, if we all, if all the cities had the attitude of South Pasadena, we wouldn't have any freeways. I mean, they're pollution causers. Stop-and-go traffic is where your pollution comes from, from cars. Now, I don't understand why if this freeway was completed, I do not like the tunnel. It should have just been done. The Caltrans, I believe, has the property. They, they bought the property, I think, when they first planned the freeway. And it should have been, and I believe subsurface, Councilman Najarian means below surface, not a tunnel. It's like La Cañada. When we were doing the La Cañada one, it was going to be on the surface, and we fought and fought and fought, and they finally lowered it through La Cañada. Now, the La Cañada people lost out, so I don't know how South Pasadena feels. They are privy to not having it, you know? I mean, it's the way things are. And the 2 freeway should be completed. It actually, I don't think it went to Beverly Hills. If it goes right to LAX, now it goes. But anyhow, no, the freeway would be good, and I think it should be done. And it, I don't like the tunnel. I wish they could just do it above ground and go continue where it goes down now, right on through. And I'm sure buying all the houses and moving the historic ones and everything would be a whole lot cheaper than building that tunnel. I just can't envision a tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lasso, followed by David Myers.
Good evening. I'm Laura Lasso. I'm the mayor of your neighboring community, La Cañada, Flint Ridge. And for our communities, it really makes no difference whether the traffic comes from a tunnel or on the surface. The results are the same. And frankly, for you, it makes no difference whether the, the tunnel connects into the 2 or the 134 and the 210, because it still impacts the city of Glendale, and it'd be disingenuous to say otherwise. So what does this tunnel do? And what, what do we know? We know from this traffic study, and I've read this, it's hard reading, that we will see with the completion of the tunnel 30,000 more vehicles per day on the 210 freeway. We will see 850 trucks per hour in peak hours more on the 210 freeway. We will see freeway, surface streets that are not fixed. The people of Alhambra are looking for this as, as the solution. There were 80 segments studied in this traffic study that were currently operating over capacity at level of service F. And as you know, that's, that's gridlock. When the tunnel is completed, 70% of those will remain at level of service F. Most of the streets that are anticipated to benefit from the tunnel will remain at capacity, at level of service F, such as Fair Oaks Boulevard, Fremont Avenue, Los Robles, Garfield, and Atlantic. So those very people that are looking for the tunnel to be a panacea for them, they aren't going to see that. In addition, at least 12 arterial streets will experience higher volumes of traffic solely due to the tunnel. That's what this tunnel, this study says. In Glendale, those streets are Foothill Boulevard that runs through La Cañada, La Cañada, and Glendale, Glen Oaks Boulevard in Glendale and Burbank, Verdugo Boulevard in Glendale, San Fernando Boulevard in Glendale, Burbank, and Los Angeles. So if you think that this, that you could ignore this idea and that this 210 and, and the adjacent streets will have no impact on your, on your community, that is incorrect. The other problem about this study is that it was done without consideration of the idea that this was a toll tunnel. So, study done, considering everybody's going to take that toll tunnel, that tunnel, but now it's a toll. Well, how, what percentage of those people aren't going to go on that tunnel and continue to use the surface streets because they don't want to pay the toll? This, the impacts that I just read to you, don't consider that yet at all. Regionally, we need to look regionally, but we need to look regionally with our eyes open. A solution that isn't a solution for one area, because it isn't for the current area, and a solution that creates more problems in another area is no solution at all. We need to not spend these billions of dollars on, on a tunnel. We need to forget the antiquated ideas of freeways, much better put to use to move freight traffic, get people out of their cars into public transportation. This tunnel is, is a steamroller, and if you, in your consideration, believe that it is not in the best interest of the residents of Glendale, I urge you to get on board today in opposition and do it loudly and quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. David Myers, followed by Brian Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, staff, and the public. My name is David Myers. Glendale needs to oppose the 710 toll tunnel now. This tunnel is not being constructed for the commuter and a passenger car. This is being constructed for trucks. And this is not a North Glendale or a South Glendale issue. This is a Glendale issue. We're in the middle. We really are. I know some people in Glendale said, "It's in the foothills. It's not my problem," or "It doesn't affect me." I've even heard somebody say, "Well, there's not a lot of trucks on the 134." Yet, I would have to say that. Major impacts to the 134. Let's not forget that where this tunnel is going, where it terminates is, is at the 134-210 interchange. So you're going to have cars coming up the 710 bypassing the 5. So the 710 to the 134 to the 101, bypassing the 5. They'll do that, just like they bypassed the 10 by taking the 15 down and cutting across the 210 straight across. And we've seen a huge number of trucks in the area. This is always, on that other, on that note, real quick, I'm not sure how anybody in the San Gabriel Valley can say that this is going to be the solution to all their problems. The 210 is gridlocked, so is the 60, and so is the 10, eastbound, westbound. This is just going to add more to it. This is not going to solve those gridlock issues on any of those east-west freeways. And this is always about the money. Prop R, last November, it passed. One of the non-public transit items identified in the half the sales tax increase is the I-10-710 North Gap closure. That's this. Sales tax measure, it provides $780 million funding for this. That's insane. That's my money. That's your money. It's half a cent. That's, this is hundreds of millions of dollars working against us. And what they keep saying is, "We need to study it more." Right. Let's keep it working. Let's keep you working. This, we're wasting our money with all these studies. Let's spend the close to $1 billion with a decent idea. How about, how about spending on the existing infrastructure we already have? First of all, starting with the East LA connection where the 5 chokes to 2 lanes. If Caltrans really fixed the 5-10-60 interchange instead of building this tunnel, we probably wouldn't even be talking about it. And in closing, all I really want for LA County, all I really want is for LA County's part of the 5 to be as nice as Orange County's. If we had 5 and 6 lanes, we wouldn't even be here discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Ellis, followed by Robert Di Pietro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Ellis. I'm a resident of Northwest Glendale. I'm here tonight on my own volition to ask you to support, to either support the completion of the 710 link at the best or not to oppose it. I've been in California for 35 years. I've lived in Glendale for 31 or so of those years. I've always been amazed that the 710 link is not completed. Your responsibility to the member, the residents and voters of Glendale includes those of us on the west side of town who take the burden of the trucks on the 5 freeway. The 710 will improve traffic on the 5. It will improve traffic in places. There are lots of opinions here. Study it some more. Please don't oppose it. Thank you.
Robert Di Pietro, followed by Bill Graham.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Robert Di Pietro. We're property owners in Glendale. We're also property owners in some of the adjacent communities. I'm a resident of Las Feliz, but I'm here tonight because clearly the completion of the link, the 710 link, is something that has been planned or was planned when the freeway system was designed many decades ago and needs, needs to be completed. The logic, at least of following the idea of diverting the, the link in various directions, should be followed, and I think that the idea of opposing it where it comes over to Glendale has a great deal of logic. First of all, it lengthens the route, and it also sort of, it does not lead to a direct, more direct route. I would at least ask that you not take a stand, but if you do take a stand, that it be in support of at least the further study of the proposal. The link is a necessary link, and it would, it would benefit Glendale by providing additional routes towards Long Beach and Orange County, which don't exist now unless a person is more diverted down the 5 freeway, providing more congestion there. It would increase vehicle safety. It would decrease pollution by decreasing vehicle miles and also the idling and the traffic that occurs now. Glendale, not only Glendale would benefit, but the adjacent communities would benefit. And I think that in terms of, in terms of the benefit, it would be a benefit for the greater whole. I think that there's definitely, there will impacts to someone, but I think we need to look at this issue globally and realize that what we need to do is come up with a solution, and that solution is, is the link that will provide a, a greater benefit to the communities, communities at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Graham, followed by Harry Knapp.
Good evening, Mr. Quintero, members of council. My name is Bill Graham. I'm a Republican, pro-business resident of Burbank. As Mr. Quintero and Mr. Weaver know, I've been involved with the 710 issue for a long time. A few of us have formed a PAC called Communities Against the 710 Freeway. All we've really done so far is put up a website, www-communitiesagainst710.com. You know, Nat Reed has been the paid lobbyist for Alhambra for a generation, and he's been spinning just as long. Never seen him spin like tonight. We all know it's not coming to Glendale. Mr. Reed would bring his issue to nonprofits and business groups stressing how important and vital the 710 is to business. But Nat was so busy with the 710, sometimes Glendale's business community suffered. Like when the city tried to balance their budget on the backs of the business community by imposing a 7% tax on long-distance usage. This was in the 90s. Nestle, IHOP, all the big businesses were up in arms. I remember asking Mr. Reed for help on this. He's a community leader. He wasn't interested, but he always had time to push the 710. Mr. Reed pushes this idea that the 710 extension is the sole missing link in our transportation system. He knows better. And Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Ellis should take a look at Caltrans' master plan from the 50s. Only 61% of those freeways were built, and yes, indeed, the 2 was slated to go through Beverly Hills. It doesn't because cities and counties have the legal right to make their own transportation decisions. And this is a legal right that Caltrans, Alhambra, and Nat Reed have tried to rip away from an independent city, and they've been at it for decades, all at taxpayer expense. This idea that this is only South Pasadena's fight is nonsense. Put this tunnel through, the 210's going to clog. You know how La Cañadans know that? Because Caltrans' own statistics show it. And if they go back to an over-ground freeway, it's not South Pasadena that loses the majority of the homes. That dishonor goes to the Los Angeles community of El Sereno. There is an alternative to the 710. It's called the multimodal low build. Admittedly, South Pasadena has done a poor job marketing the plan. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be considered. Mr. Reed has commissioned a couple of questionable polls here in Glendale and in South Pasadena, too. If the respondents were not made aware of the low build, then they are bogus polls. Caltrans, Alhambra, and Nat Reed might scoff at the low build, but Glendale's last three congressional representatives have all supported it. And to my fellow Republicans watching at home, the environmental concerns on this issue is legitimate, but this is not just a bunch of environmentalists stifling progress. Carlos Morehead wrote extensively about the negative effects of the 710 on the 210. And every year, Jim Rogan made sure, may I have an extra minute?
No. Or can't. Thank you very much.
Please oppose the tunnel.
Harry Knapp, followed by Phil Putnam.
Harry Knapp, 17th Central, South Pasadena. I served 13 years on the city council in South Pasadena, ending in 2003 as mayor, and was honored to serve with one of your former colleagues, Allen Givens, on the original Royal Verdugo Board. On your time chart in here, you're, you're missing one report came out in 2006. This idea popped up back in 2002, and they did a quote, "A feasibility study," which was released in 2006, and you should read it because we, it got called the flawed, fatal flaw analysis is what it was. But it was a report that there was enough information in there that you could really tell it was a really terrible idea. And it really fails on all three fronts: transportation, solution, pollution, and cost, which has been mentioned before. Let me quote from Doug Faling, district director, local district director, and this is a quote that appeared in the San Marino Tribune. "That cancer and emphysema rates are higher near tunnels is absolutely a true statement." And that's Doug Faling. Imagine yourself flying into LAX as you come in and you can see the LA basin, the semicircular basin, 13 million people down there spewing out all this pollution on all those freeways, all those city streets with an inversion layer over it. You're telling me that this little four-and-a-half-mile connector over here is going to make a positive contribution? I, you know, I do have an engineering degree. I mean, I have some technical thinking ability. As far as removing congestion off the streets, and South Pasadena, Fair Oaks, it's terrible, and I wish we could solve it. This is not the solution. Anybody living in the southern part of Pasadena, South Pass, San Marino, Arcadia, Alhambra, you have to be on a freeway to use a tunnel. Where, any delivery or any resident, where are they going to get off and on the 710? They're going to get off and on Valley Boulevard, just like they do now. It's not going to do the darn thing. They're not going to go all the way through the tunnel up to Pasadena and make their way back down south again. I can't understand San Marino's position on this. If you're making, if you're on a truck on a 10 making a delivery in San Marino, you're going to go off on Garfield Boulevard. If you're on the 710, you're going to get off at Valley Boulevard. You're not going to go up to Pasadena. not gonna go up to Pasadena and circle all the way back down again. I mean, it's ridiculous. So it's really a bad idea. I don't have a solution for all the problems, but this isn't it. I ask for your no vote on the, your negative vote on the resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Philip Putnam, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you. My name is Philip Putnam. I'm a city council member from the city of South Pasadena, immediate past member, and are city's representative to the Tunnel Feasibility Steering Committee. I've been involved with this study, I was involved with the first study as the city's representative, and I've been involved with this study, and I'm quite familiar with it. As Mr. Weaver pointed out earlier, and other people have later on, there's two issues here tonight. I'm not gonna address the first issue, many people have already done that. That's whether the seven-ten should be completed at all. Our city's position's quite firm on that. I think that if you look at the health and other studies, especially two that were recently released by the USC School of Medicine and reported in the June 24th Los Angeles Times, they show the increased danger of living within 500 feet of a freeway, and how increased traffic on freeways affects people's health. The city of Glendale and its residents, once they become aware of that, are not gonna be in favor of any increased traffic on either the two or the two-ten, or the 134, they all come into Glendale. With regard to the tunnel study, what I would urge you to do is to proceed cautiously. As Dr. Schneider, our mayor pro tem, pointed out earlier when he gave our city's position quite accurately, we do not oppose sound research of a tunnel alternative. The question is whether or not this current study really engages in sound research of a tunnel alternative. Originally, I believed that it did. It was to be a technical feasibility study, studying the geotechnical, geologic, and hydrological issues relating to the construction of a tunnel on a root-neutral basis. And by the way, those who say it doesn't affect Glendale are wrong. It is really a true root-neutral study. There are five zones that are being studied. If you take your hand and lay them out, if you were to put the base of your hand along the ten freeway and spread your fingers like this, where the seven-ten currently ends, that shows you the five zones that are being studied. Glendale is, I believe, in zone two and touches onto zone three. And one of the alternatives that's being very strongly considered is a connection to the two. They talk about the shortest distance being a straight line. If I were to approach Mr. Quintero from here, the shortest approach would be straight up the middle. That's not the most logical approach. The most logical approach is for me to go 10 feet to the right and then in through the door. When you're dealing with subsurface conditions and you don't know what's below the ground, you don't know what the most logical approach is going to be, which is why it needs to be a root-neutral study. You have to look at groundwater, seismic faults, geologic conditions, geotechnical conditions, all the other conditions that you can't see below the ground. It's quite possible that the best route will be through the middle of San Marino, or it's quite possible that the best route will be slightly to the west and connect to the two. We don't know. But to say that this issue does not affect Glendale is completely wrong and misleading. So I just urge you to approach this cautiously. Thank you very much.
Mike Mohill, followed by Anthony Portantino.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members. My name is Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. On June 12th, I wrote a letter to the editor of Glendale News Press, and when I sent the original letter in, I titled it "Nimba is Alive and Well in Southern California." The Glendale News Press called it "Politics is Abstructing a Needed Freeway." Did some calculations here. I'm 67 years of age, believe it or not, well-preserved, and I drove the freeways for 27 years as a salesman, from Glendale to Gardena, El Monte, all over the county, and I'm, that's why I'm crazy, you know? Because of all the fumes from the freeways. Okay? Thank you. Okay? Now, if I listen to the people who oppose this idea, well, let's go backwards first. This idea has been studied for 28 years. That means I was 39 years of age when this thing was first came up. And if we studied it again for another 28 years, I'll be 95. Wow. My great-grandchildren might enjoy this freeway extension. The lady from La Canyata, who was the post of this extension, says we should use public transportation more. I'd like to ask her, when was the last time she used the bus and took the bus? I was in New York about 10 days ago. I took the subway all the time. Okay? Nimba, alive and well in Southern California, not in my backyard. What would Glendale be like if we didn't have the two freeway, the 134, or the five freeway? Would we be the third-largest city in the county? Would Mr. Rick Caruso put in the Americana brand? We are a vibrant city because of the freeways, and yes, the people who live close to the freeways suffer. There's nothing you can do. Maybe we should go back to the Stone Age, and we'll all walk. I mean, this is the 19, excuse me, 2009 already, almost 10. Are we gonna go backwards? Tunneling, to me, is a bad idea. Why should we spend so much more extra money where everybody else in Southern California has above ground? It's much cheaper. I just think the people in South Pasadena, and the people who opposed it, okay, are just arrogant. They love using our freeways through Glendale. Why don't we charge them $1,000 a year for using our freeway? After all, we suffer for their beauty. Not in my backyard. Isn't that wonderful? Mr. Majaron, councilman, leadership is here. We need to get this ball rolling. It's been studied to death. I don't want to be 95 when I come back here again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Portantino, and then the final card is actually Robert Alexander.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Mr. Mayor, if I could, first of all, I want to congratulate you on becoming mayor, Mr. Mayor, and the newly-elected council members. This is my first chance to be here, to congratulate you. If I could ask for your indulgence to have a little extra time to talk about Task Order Five and how that came about, and give a little historical perspective.
Hey, how much time did you want?
Well, I'll try to move as quickly as possible.
I've been giving everyone three, how about five?
I will do my best. Thank you very much. You know, I've often said that good government is too high a price to pay for any project, and my involvement in this project goes back 12 years when I sat on a city council as mayor many years ago, when Caltrans, SCAG, and MTA came to present this project. What I've learned in those 12 years is precisely why it's important for you to take action tonight, and I commend you for putting this on the agenda and taking, hopefully taking action tonight. Because what they've done is they've nickled and dimed us. They've done everything possible to move this project along. They first said we wouldn't move it forward without a feasibility study. They went to Adam Schiff, they got $3.5 million, and then suddenly only spent $500,000 on a fatal flaw analysis and chose not to do a feasibility study. Then when that was called into question, they said, oh, well, wait a minute, we'll go out and we'll do a full-bledged study, we'll spend $13 million. Well, on May 8th, I found out that they're not actually doing a feasibility study, they're only doing an analysis of subsurface soils. Again, the region was told a feasibility study, it wasn't, the promise was not kept. When I was on the city council, we asked to see the scope of work of that first study. They would not let us see the RFP, but then went out publicly and said they consulted with us. They refused to let us see the scope of work. When the city of South Pasadena asked if trucks would be going through the tunnel, they were told no. When Sid Tyler at the city of Pasadena asked if trucks would be going through the tunnel, he was told no. Other cities that support the tunnel were told yes. When I asked them at the City of La Canyata City Council meeting, why they were telling different stories to different cities, I got no answer, and I asked if they would go back and correct the record. I was told no. Again, on May 8th, I found out that the region was, again, falsely promised a feasibility study, and all of the documents called it a feasibility study, but it is in fact $6.5 million spent on an analysis of subsurface soils. Why would an organization continue to withhold information on cost, on size, on orientation, on depth, on traffic, if they were not continuing trying to move this ball forward and nickel-and-diming the public by continuing to celebrate and move it forward? That is the fundamental question, and that's why it is important for Glendale to take a position of no gap closure, and in particular, no tunnel. The gentleman who talked about the amount of excavation that'll be removed through your city, the 15-to-20-year construction that will disrupt life for a project that Caltrans' owned engineers say on the day it will open, will open at Level Service F. What's interesting about that? Caltrans' own warrants say, don't build a freeway that is worse than Level Service E. So why would they be contemplating a project that violates their own protocols? Why would they even be here pushing a project that by their own rules should not even be considered? When we talk about moving people through the region, it is true, this will be a magnet for trucks through Glendale, through the 134, to the two, to the two-ten. It will disrupt all of our lives. For Mr. Reed to stand up here and say, you know what, I've been pushing this project through every other community for decades, but now that it's gonna threaten my own city, we should oppose just that part of it, is pretty ironic to me. The low-build alternative has been brought up. Why would the communities who are affected not support traffic signalization, traffic orientations? The low-build alternative is a combination of surface traffic improvements to solve their problems. Why would a region routinely accept not having the goal line be funded, which again, would take people off of these roads, but to perpetuate the necessity to keep this project moving forward? It is imperative, and again, I commend Glendale for putting forth this issue on the table. Task Order Five came about because when I was briefed on May 8th, and I found out that they were not doing all of the information and not conducting all of the studies that the region was promised, suddenly Task Order Five showed up as a result, without any public review, without any public scrutiny, and even Adam Schiff has said, don't move forward until the public has a chance to wade in on further review. What Mr., I think, if I could say your name, Mohill, pointed out, I don't know if I said that properly or not, he talked about this has been studied for 28 years. In fact, it hasn't been studied at all. And therein lies the irony. We've had half attempts, half-baked efforts to continually move this project forward so people can say and celebrate. When the fatal flaw analysis was conducted, there were celebrations that this project was gonna move forward, only later was it recognized that it was, failed to include the financial data, failed to include the traffic data, failed to include geotechnical data. They have not even consulted the USGS, the Preeminent Geological Society from the US government, which is right here at Caltech. They have not even consulted them on seismic activity in this region, but yet, they declared this project feasible in the fatal flaw analysis. Every attempt has been made to move it forward without actually doing the work. That's why I've changed my position from my four-page letter to Caltrans, asking them to do all of this work, to say, you know what, fool me once, shame on me, fool me twice, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. It's gotta stop, we've gotta draw a line in the sand. Right now, in New Jersey, they're doing a three-and-a-half-mile tunnel from New Jersey to New York with a $10 billion estimate. This is a mile longer through rock, through fault lines. It will be $15 to $20 billion, but yet they routinely say $2 to $5 billion. And then they say, but we haven't looked at all the information. Why won't they put accurate information on the table? Why won't they put the traffic analysis germane to toll roads on the table? Because they know, if they show you how that traffic will back up onto your service streets, you will be outraged. It's time to say enough is enough. It's time to say no gap closure because it doesn't solve a problem, it doesn't increase better air quality, and it doesn't solve a traffic problem regionally or locally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Final card is Robert Alexander.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Robert Alexander. I'm a business agent of Reinforcing Ironworkers Local 416. I went to Cal State LA in '79 and '80. I commuted from San Dimas, and believe me, I tried every way, every highway, every side street, every shortcut, shortcuts on top of shortcuts, and it was just a nightmare for two years that I went to school and I commuted back and forth to San Dimas. The project is long overdue and well-needed, and I want you to know that you have the best ironworkers right here between Locals 416 and 433. We are very excited about the possibility of building this unique tunnel. Give us a shot at it, let's go forward. On behalf of the members of 416, I urge you to go forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the final card. Comments from the city council or questions?
I'm gonna start. Start here. Taking a lot of notes, so I'll be all over the map responding. I'll just go through some. I can understand two sides, the technical side and the emotional side, and they're both at play. When I was elected to city council in 1997, I thought my task was to do my homework, to study, to ask questions, before I made a decision and a vote. I've seen virtually nothing yet to do that with. Little stuff, a feasibility study, looking at geotech bearings, skipping around. Any of you see the EIR on the Americana? Was it 18 inches high? Have nothing. That document's supposed to be used by council members to inform them on the impacts of anything that is planned, and how you can possibly mitigate for them. But we're looking at alternatives, feasibility alternatives. I have to go by what I did as my career, from my background. Can't you beat, Mr. Mohill? I'm 70 years old. I drove on the first freeway there was, before any of the local freeways were around. But in my career with the city of Los Angeles and the Army Corps of Engineers, as civil engineer and as a project manager, I took projects from day one, initial alignments going all over the place, to literally construction and completion. One project I spent 20 years on when I retired, they were still finishing it up. This project will never be built, probably in the lifetime of most people seated here. It's been studied, I was looking at it in the 1970s, and I served on the Royal Verdugo sub-region, and we talked about it. And we're talking about it today at the feasibility level. And then this was handed out, the purpose of the tunnel feasibility study is to continue with the geotechnical study. If you don't know what's down there, you can't even begin to consider if you're going to do a tunnel or not. However, additional scope of the tunnel feasibility study will include traffic, air quality, noise, fire safety, and cost considerations. Very preliminary, sketchy information. You haven't even got an alignment yet to start talking about. One alignment and then starting to lay out, not even detailed plans, just alignment studies, alignment study. It says the outcome of the study will be used for screening purposes, not alignment screening, which one, which direction could it go? A more detailed evaluation of these technical tasks will be carried out in future phases. You've got years to go. So I understand it's an emotionally charged issue. I know the impact up in La Corseta. But I also understand as an engineer, from the Caltrans standpoint, it's very obvious this was to connect through. So there's two sides, who's right, who's wrong. I don't think anybody knows yet because we haven't gone far enough to do it. Now, let's see, what can I say? Panama Canal, I've said before, is being So that's going to be, it's not going to affect the traffic going up through the San Joaquin Valley, and I don't think the tunnel will have much impact on the streets in South Pasadena, because the tunnel's going straight through, as been said. I don't know what the solution there, because when I drive on Fremont, some of those others, especially West Howard, it's terrible. The city, as been said, in Southern California, we can't give up our cars. We grew up on cars as opposed to the East Coast where tunnels and rail was in for decades. We had streetcars, I rode them, but we took them out and put buses in. We cannot give up our cars and our buses, never will. Now we can because wherever the, the, the streetcars went, well, sold off that land, put apartment buildings in the way, and blocked off the tunnels and put more condos. So you're not going to do that again. Said on the Airport Authority, a decade ago, I asked a gentleman who worked for JPL, Carl Rajio, he says, "We're eliminating Stage 2 of Craft, we're on Stage 3." So I said, "When's the Stage 4 coming?" He says, "It's coming." And we're seeing it today in cars, hybrids, different forms of technology that are evolving, green technology. Cars eventually are going to be silent, running, they're not going to make the noise, they're going to be clean. We're seeing hybrids now. We made more progress than last two or three years on that we did in decades. Same with planes, they'll eventually be quiet because of design and technology advances. So if you eliminate, if the 210, if the tunnel went through and connected to the 210 and you have quiet cars and they're not emitting anything, then what is the problem? Because it's very obvious, the 210, its design capacity has not been met, it's running too light. That's just the reality of it. Poles, you can structure any pole to give you the results that you want. So the questions, I had looked at them before and threw it away because they were weighted to give the preferred answer. So I don't go with that. I talked about the Americana, the EIR. Oh, I can't wait to see the doozy of an EIR on this thing. It will be that hot whenever they get to it. That's only to tell the decision-makers what they need to know. I worked on the Alameda Corridor. I, you want to put a subsurface rail car, fine, yeah, put it on the rail. And wherever you get it to, okay. Now what do you do with the rail cars? You got to unload them and disperse it. So what are you going to do? Build big parking lots and bring in all the equipment like at the ports to unload all the carts and load it on to other modes of transportation, trucks, to move it out again? There's a lot of things to think about when you start talking about doing something like this. And just imagine, if we didn't have the 134 freeway, and you live in the San Gabriel Valley, and you want to work in San Fernando Valley, or Thousand Oaks, or vice versa, without the 134 freeway, do you, where do you think those cars would be going to get where they're going? Colorado, Glen Oaks, whatever? The freeways were designed to move transportation. Los Angeles continued to grow, grow beyond what it should have grown, and it continues to grow. So, and people loving their cars, they're all on the road, now our freeways are impacted. What are you going to do? Oh, freeways, yeah. The carpool lane, what are they going to do now? Toll. Well, they can do it now. I didn't know that. They have a way structured on the loading on freeways during traffic hours or whatever, tell you not to get on, when you get on, you have a box sitting on top of a car and it takes care of you automatically. Wow, that's progress. Who knows what's going to happen? Tunnel, tunnel better. What else did I write here? Can't remember that one. But I'll tell you, nothing, nothing is going to get done. You know why? Because the boys up in Sacramento have a structurally unsound budget, and they're not going to fix that in our lifetime. So where the heck is the money coming from to build this even if it's feasible? And alternatives to it, where's that money coming from? It won't happen until the, the public raises up an ire and tells their elected officials, "Get your act together." And when they do decide, half of you are going to be happy and half of you are going to be disappointed. Because you can't build a city, you can't build a street, you can't build anything without it offending somebody. We do a flyover bridge, and we've been ripped for a flyover bridge. Too much noise. Oh, construction makes noise. We don't want noise. Don't want the flower street crossing. Oh, it's going to put traffic into our streets. Well, anything you do is that way. But in this particular case, folks, we have a long way to go. That's why I support study of, let's do more study, let's get more information. It does not mean I'm voting for or against a tunnel. I probably won't even have the privilege, or I don't know if it's a privilege, to sit here and vote for or against it, and even if the City Council does. Is Sacramento going to care what Glendale thinks? Nope, because the politicians up there will decide when they have the money to do it. So, one thing, I tell you, based on my background, I cannot vote for, against a project when I have nothing to look at. That was my career, that's what I needed to do my job. Totally premature, we're in a feasibility stage, doing geotechnical work only. So I have a lot of frustration. We don't know anything yet. So I'll support the one, the B or whatever it is for, where is it? Continued study. And somebody said in here, "Sound research." Oh, we'll be talking to Caltech, we'll be talking to everybody about earthquake faults underground, we'll be talking about groundwater conditions, who knows what's down there? So much of our area is sitting on a Luvio fans that came down through the centuries, boulders down there. I'd find some dinosaurs down there too, if we're lucky, that'll take care of it. Anyhow, sorry, I talked long enough and I jumped all over that place, but this is only the beginning of a long time, and none of us will be around to see the end of it.
Friedman.
First, I'd like to thank the guests who have come in from other cities to come here and, and talk to us. I appreciate your testimony here, and I'm also a believer in regional planning. These are big issues. Highways involve many cities and they involve all of us, so it's important that we keep talking. So I appreciate your being here. Thank you very much. One word came up a lot tonight, and it's something that I was thinking of a lot when people were speaking, and that's the word "progress." And I agree that progress is a lot of what this has to do with. And it's a big term, but it's a big project. It involves a lot of money, and we'll do a lot to, to shape this region, and that kind of money can have a very big effect in whatever it's used for. The highway system in Los Angeles has a lot to do with how we live, and cars have a lot to do with how we live. And it's going to be, to no surprise to those of you who have been watching me at this council for the last four months, that I believe that the way that this city has developed and the way that we live now is not sustainable, and something that as we move into the future will change. It's interesting that somebody made the comment that the 710 should have been completed and it should have been completed above ground. And it just goes to show the kind of priority that we have traditionally in Los Angeles put on cars and on the movement of cars, that we're willing to entertain the idea of taking an entire community, a beautiful historic community that's very loved by its residents, and destroy it by putting a highway through it. And that that's considered something that is a rational way to move traffic around Los Angeles shows that I believe that our priorities have been put in the wrong place for a very long time. That it's become less about how we live and how our residents live, and more about moving our vehicles around. And that's become the predominant issue in this city. And anybody who's lived in other large cities around the country knows that it's not always the way that cities work, that there are cities that have as many people as Los Angeles that function differently. Of course, the people who live there have very different expectations. They don't all expect to own a car, but there's also alternative ways for them to get around their cities. And Los Angeles has done a very bad job over the years of creating those sorts of alternatives for people that are easy and convenient and that really gets you places, and have made it to where people really do need to have their cars. But then into the mix of this, we throw the Port of Los Angeles. So we throw a port that's going to move goods all over the country from this coast, that then will move its freight around the highways of Los Angeles that are already crowded by people's expectations of every single person owning a car and wanting to move across the great distances of Los Angeles by highway. And you have a completely untenable situation. You have freight being moved by truck through one of the densely, most densely populated cities in the country, that is also a, a city that has a very unusual expectation of everybody moving themselves around the city by car. And you have a situation that as we progress into the future, doesn't work. If we really want progress, we wouldn't be focusing on the highways. We'd be focusing on other ways of getting freight around. Because no matter what we do to the highways, we're never going to have real progress until we reduce that burden of those trucks moving through our city. We're given as a council, and we're given as a region, all of us, a Sophie's Choice, an impossible decision to make. Either we don't take the burden off of Alhambra and the other cities to the east of us who are unfairly burdened, who have been for years suffering because of a highway that was never completed, or to fix their problem, we sacrifice a part of our city. The people who live in La Cressenta are not NIMBYs. They're simply people that have had something that the rest of the people who live around highways didn't have when those highways were put in, and that's, they have the benefit of seeing the negative effects that those highways have brought to the people who live around them. The people who lived around all of our other highways, the 5, the 710, the 405, would have been just as adamantly opposed to those highways going in if they'd had a crystal ball and been able to look into the future to see what those highways would have looked like today. So no, those are not NIMBYs, and they're not people who are unsympathetic. They're just people who have the value of seeing what has happened to the rest of the city and don't want that in their community, who don't want the traffic, who don't want the smog, and all of the rest of those negative impacts that are undeniable. So we have a Sophie's Choice here. Do we not extend the courtesy of our neighbors to help them with their problem, or do we sacrifice our own community? And it's an impossible choice, and it's, it's one that I'm not willing to make in either direction. Because I think that what Caltrans and the MTA should be concentrating on is moving all of the freight out of Long Beach by rail. And I don't know why we don't have legislation that says, "If you have a freight that's moving 90 miles or more away from the city of LA, you cannot put it on one of our highways." What would this amount of money, $15 billion, $10 billion do to extending our freight rail system? I don't know, but I've got to think that it would take a big chunk of those trucks off of our roads. That's the only solution that will give us real progress. Once you do that, whether or not you close the 710, close it, you won't have the same impacts, because then you really are talking about cars, and maybe it wouldn't be opposed. Or maybe you wouldn't need to close it, because if you take the trucks out of the equation, maybe Alhambra and those other cities wouldn't be so badly impacted. But I'm not willing to sit here and tell everybody up in La Cressenta, "We're going to now turn your highway into a giant parking lot for trucks, let those trucks spill out onto the surrounding roads," when the, when rail has never seriously been thought of as an alternative. So my position is, I'm not even interested in discussing the 710. To me, it's not an issue, it's a red herring. Really, the issue should be, how do we move all of this freight by rail? And public transportation, that's another big part of this whole equation, and something that we should be focusing on. Dealing with the 710, it's a red herring, it's a patch, it's the old way of thinking that every, all of our fixes are, "Build more highway, make the highways wider, make them wider, make them wider." Every study that's ever been done says, "Every time you widen a highway, you just invite more traffic." When we fix, if you close the 710, you're just going to invite more and more trucks and more and more traffic. If we really want progress, let's move away from the highways and think about other ways of moving people and freight around Los Angeles.
Okay, the next.
Well, I'm glad that this is before the Glendale City Council at this point. Disagree with Mr. Weaver to wait and to hold off any decisions until he gets his two-foot stack of, of EIRs. I think the time to, to make comment is now. First off, I want to say that I do feel for the, the residents of Alhambra, Temple City, San Marino, South Pass, El Serino, that are enduring the, the terrible increase in traffic that you are currently experiencing. And that's a shame. I don't think any community needs to, needs to put up with that. The problem is that, in my opinion, the 710 tunnel and an expansion of the freeway system connecting the 710 to the 210, or perhaps even to the 2 freeway, is just a extension of what I called Eisenhower-era transportation planning. In fact, it may even go before Eisenhower, it may even be Truman era. It's an anachronism in the 21st century. It's an anachronism in a county and a region like Los Angeles and Southern California. The time to build the 710 connection has passed. The time to build it was maybe 50 years ago. That window unfortunately is closed. I think we all have to come to grips with that. However, we have to be a little positive and realize that we have so many other options to relieve traffic and to get goods transported. We have light rail, we have bus rapid transit, we're working on the Wilshire subway, the Orange Line, the Gold Line. And to everyone from the San Gabriel Valley, I want you to know that I have stood firm. I have stood firm in the face of a lot of opposition at the MTA to support an extension of the Gold Line to Azusa and beyond. That's the type of transportation growth that I think is smart. It's efficient, it's clean. There's MetroLink, there's carpool lanes, there's DMUs, diesel multiple units, except they're not diesel anymore, they're hybrid multiple units, small trains, which can use the existing rail lines to help people get back and forth. My good friends in labor, I don't want you to worry, you're going to get plenty of work. We're building a Wilshire subway. I hope soon we'll be building light rail cars in Los Angeles, in a green corridor, in a LEED-certified green building. You're going to have plenty of, of good, clean work that you can be proud of. And I know you're very good, all the trades, from the electricians to the ironworkers to the painters, you're going to have plenty of work. This is the dawning of an era of incredible transportation projects. Almost all of them are going to be clean and beneficial to the entire community. The problem with the tunnel is it's so expensive. $12 billion today. By the time we finish our EIRs and get those two-foot stack of documents, maybe $14 billion, $15 billion. It's the wrong type of message to send, it's the wrong type of money to spend promoting single-passenger vehicles and goods transport. Goods transport should be from the Port of Los Angeles in Long Beach on dedicated railways through the Alameda Corridor, to the Alameda Corridor east, to the North County inland port that Supervisor Antonovich is promoting, to an inland port in the Riverside and further east. And yes, there are large parcels of land there. And yes, there will be the mechanisms available to take those transport cargo containers, place them on trucks, and then let them distribute throughout the United States. Let them distribute up the, up the I-5. Let them distribute up the, up the I-5 from that point on. We have an urban setting, and we need to get those container vehicles off the roads. And when those container vehicles get off the roads, guess what? The freeways clear up. You don't have to take that shortcut down Fremont anymore. You can get on the 5. For the money we're spending, we could build a series of light rail lines which will connect the entire area. And we're doing that right now, folks. We're doing that right now. We're opening up the East Side Extension, which is going from downtown to the East Side and further on to perhaps the Whittier Area. The Gold Line Plan has been advanced. It's going to go from where it currently terminates all the way down east to Azusa, perhaps down to Ontario Airport. That's what we need to do, is to get people out of their vehicles, onto this type of rail. And it's going to free up the vehicles. Not everybody, not everybody can take a rail line, or take a light rail, or take a rapid bus like our Orange Line, which is extremely successful and extremely inexpensive. But people, there are many people that have that commute day in, day out, from home to work, from work to home. For those type of people, the mass transit and the light rail is going to be a quick and efficient way to move around. The 710 connection is not just a freeway connection. It's not just a gap. It's a connection of a truck route from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. And, as you know, a huge, a huge portion of the goods that the United States uses comes in those ports and comes right through Los Angeles. Who's going to pay those tolls when the tolls eventually come to be? Is it going to be the soccer moms in the minivans? Probably not. Is it going to be that 18-wheel trucker who has plenty of money on the line, who's ready to put the hammer down and get through that tunnel and get through Pasadena, La Cañada, La Crescenta, Glendale, Sunland, Tahunga? Of course, they're the ones that are going to do it. Some people have said we should hold off. You people, hold off. Don't make a decision now. Well, that's a little disingenuous. Are the proponents holding off? Is the 710 coalition holding off with their newsletters touting their success? They probably have the champagne on ice already. The path to today's 710 success. Yay, Sidio's bill passes. Poor Portantino, his anti-710 bill dies in committee. The proponents are certainly starting and pushing. To ask the rest of us to not take a stand and wait is really disingenuous. I think it's perfectly, perfectly acceptable and perfectly timely for us to make a comment. I want to say, again, to reiterate, that for the communities that are affected with the traffic, I know how difficult that is. I have been there. I used to date someone on Fremont Avenue. But my wife isn't listening. Not while we were married. Let's be clear about that. Before I was married. But I, I do want to say that I am committed to regional transportation improvements. I will work with John Fasana, your representative for the San Gabriel Valleys, to do whatever needs to be done and look at some of those multimodal, low-build alternatives to get the traffic flowing. And I think if you combine all these ideas, light rail, transport by freight, multimodal, low-build alternatives, I think that we can work and have success at not only cleaning up the air and the environment, but also making your quality of life in your cities much better than it already is. And I am committed to do that in any role that I play, whether it's sitting on the Glendale City Council or whether it's sitting on the MTA. I do want to say that part of my efforts in helping you, and this isn't just lip service, and I've bragged about it in the city of Glendale, so maybe I'll, you guys can close your ears, you've heard about it before, but when the MTA had several hundred million dollars of money that they were going to decide how to spend, my motion wrestled it away from the MTA and distributed it to the cities on a per capita basis. Glendale got approximately $6 million, I think, based on our size. I'm sure each and every one of your cities got your pro-rata per capita share. That's money that you can use to help your infrastructure, to help your traffic problems, lights, synchronization, road widening, et cetera. So that's where I am. I'm not a NIMBY. I do see the big picture, and it's by working together, by attacking this problem, and it's a problem that everyone faces, attacking it in this multimodal way that we're going to solve our problems. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, I'm going to, first, let me, let's see, first, let me take the, take the mystery out of where perhaps some of you are concerned where this may go. I'll start by saying that I plan to support Action Item 8A1, the resolution to oppose the tunnel alternative. Now, let me get into my comments about it. I'm not going to repeat the topics that were already covered by my colleagues, but I wanted to make some observations. Assemblymember Portantino is here, and it's interesting, you were talking about when you were serving as a council member, you didn't mention the city, but I think we all know what city that was, our neighbor, La Cañada, Flint Ridge. And when you served on the Royal Verdugo, as I did years later, not only were they talking about it then, they were talking about it when I served. It was almost like, "Don't pay attention to that man behind the curtain." That's the attitude, you know? We're not, we don't have a plan. We just sort of have a plan. We want to keep it moving forward, but we don't have a plan. It's interesting. It's a kind of linear thinking, and I like to poke fun at my colleague, Mr. Weaver, because...
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you. Because engineers think in a particular way, and non-engineers think in another way, and...
Logical.
Yeah, and you know, and that's what I wanted to get at. Thank you, Mr. Weaver, bringing it back up. You started your comments with, "There's a technical side, and then there's an emotional side." There's a whole world in between the two, Mr. Weaver.
That's right.
There's the common sense side. There's the, how about the reasonability side? How about the fiscally responsible side? And how about the quality-of-life side? These are all real, and they are tangible to our constituents. I want to, Mr. Myers, David Myers spoke earlier, and this issue reminds me a great deal of how I first met Mr. Myers. It was in, this won't mean a lot to those of you who are here from areas remote from Glendale, but we have an area in our city called Mountain Oaks. It's a beautiful, historic, and undeveloped area. And in October of 2006, before running for office, I started writing editorials in the newspaper about preserving Mountain Oaks. And the argument I heard at that time is, "There's no plan to do anything with Mountain Oaks. Just leave it alone." Seems to me that it was worth preserving, whether or not there was a plan immediately on the table or not. And this is very similar to that. You know, I, I want to address one other thing, and that's about this, this issue of NIMBY. Mr. Mo Hill brought it up, and some others. Listen, folks, I'm an elected official, an elected advocate for the residents of Glendale, okay? I, I don't find that there's anything embarrassing, wrong, or inappropriate about putting the needs of Glendale residents first. That's what I'm supposed to be doing. I am, like my colleagues have mentioned, I am truly sorry about the congestion in the cities to the east of Glendale. I've also driven in it. I know exactly what it's like. And Mr. King's comments about trying to get to his father and being stuck in traffic is, is compelling. However, the, the idea that we should close the gap so that areas that have been completely messed up by the 710 terminating in their area, we should simply share the wealth with Glendale and bring that to this city, just don't play with me. And I don't think it's in the best interest of the residents of this city, and I won't support it. I didn't have the opportunity, when I served on the Verdugo or Royal subregion committees, to stand up and say, "No." But for my own city, I know that we're called upon to make statements and take votes that demonstrate our leadership in our city for our residents. Glendale's the third-largest city in the county of Los Angeles. And if you think for a moment that the comments made by the city of Glendale's representatives, the collective comment from the city, "No, we don't want this. We oppose this," mean nothing, you're wrong. You're wrong. And to the extent that it will allow other cities to step forward and take that same step, make that same decision, and speak for their constituency, I'm happy to help facilitate that. So I will be, as I said, supporting the resolution at 8A1. And given the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that, that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drayman. I'll try and be brief. We've been at it for quite a while. I'll also like to start by thanking the elected officials and the building trade reps for coming this evening, as well as the homeowners from the different cities. I guess my ideas and opinions pretty much mirror Ms. Friedman's. I think it's time to move beyond automobiles. The billions that are going to be spent on a proposed tunnel or other alternative are better used with mass transit, container freights out of the ports. And to my friend and friends in the building trades, and we do have the best ironworkers in the world, I agree. They did a tremendous job at the Americana and other projects throughout Southern California. I think what we need to do is focus on mass transit projects and the surrounding commercial and residential areas. That's the future of Los Angeles, hopefully the future of the US. You only have to travel and talk to people, I happen to have some cousins who are visiting from Spain. One is a doctor, the other's a college professor, and they travel all over Spain. How do they travel? They travel high-speed rail, intercity subways, et cetera, et cetera. And here in the United States, it's like, all we can think of is outdated technology, always looking at the, at the past. We just can't do it anymore. It just doesn't make any sense to me. The people of Alhambra and South Pasadena to a certain extent, but especially Alhambra and El Sereno, they have absolutely taken the brunt of the 710 freeway and all of the other traffic, and they've done it for years and years and years. And it's really a tragedy that that happened to, to those communities. But I really don't see the alternative. I mean, the idea of spending billions and billions of dollars for this, this punch-through, I just don't have any interest in going in that direction. I don't think it makes any sense at all. I think it's time for, for this region, this state, although we are broke. Mr. Portantino?
I stand against it.
Well, that answers the question. He voted against taking the gas tanks. Anyway, I just find this whole concept one that it's time to, time to move past it. So I'm prepared to do whatever the majority is interested in doing.
If that's, I think I would be more comfortable with a resolution that says exactly what we've all said, which is that we prefer, we would like an alternative that looks at rail, and that we're not interested in the 710 closure as the primary way of moving freight around Los Angeles. The way that the first alternative is worded is it almost sounds like we're not interested in the tunnel, but we might be interested in the highway above ground, which I don't want, and I don't want to send the wrong message. I'd like to be as specific as we can.
Well, that would, Mr. City Attorney, that would move us to Item 8A3, basically, or an alternative, or rather than that, I would, I would, I would simply propose a resolution opposing the 710 gap closure, and at the same time, expressing the city's interest in endorsing the, the notion of rail, as Ms. Friedman, Ms. Friedman stated.
Well, let's break that into two. Container rail coming out of the ports, and then mass transit projects.
Mr. Mayor, maybe a suggestion, there'd been some discussion about the low-build, multimodal type concept from the other cities, maybe encompassing that. I know Mr. Najarian spoke of that. Or it would be, you know, signalization, improvements to existing infrastructure, mass transit of all types, restricting freight to rail, that kind of thing. Just a suggestion.
You're writing away feverishly, Mr. ...
I'm feverishly writing away with some suggestions, and it certainly, feel, feel free to reject them. We can modify the resolution at 8A1 to reflect, quite simply, that the council opposes not only the tunnel, but any other gap closure alternative, and then have an additional paragraph, and we can mark that as Section 2, I'm sorry, we'll make that Section 3, where the city council further expresses interest in reviewing and assessing other non-gap closure alternatives, which could include the low build, it could include rail, whether it be freight, whether it be by container, whether it be rail lines, light rail, heavy rail, or any of the other alternatives, as long as it's not a gap closure alternative.
All right, then, Mr. Mayor, I will, I will take, I will move Item 8A1 with those modifications.
Second.
Are there any more comments from the city council? Mr. Weaver.
All these other alternatives, theoretically on the table today, I'm aware of them all. I've studied most of them. But I still am not in a position with enough information to say no on a tunnel at this time. That's why I will vote no. But all the other alternatives, they're being studied, and hopefully someday we'll have high-speed mono-rail and all these other methods of transportation. But it won't be in the next 50 years.
Hope you're wrong, Mr. Weaver.
I hope I am wrong, too.
You mean on the park?
Don't worry, I won't be around to no for...
That's what I wanted a clarification with.
Someday we will see trains as a technology.
I'll be looking down on, oh, yeah.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I didn't want to include Mr. Weaver's demise in the future in that...
Oh, don't worry.
...one of those modifications.
I'm already looking at my mortality.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Thank you all very, very much.
We still have more business.
Don't leave now, we've got lots more fun.
Yeah, we got a historical house.
All right, we'll be moving to 9D. 9D is Director of Planning Regarding Glendale Register of Historic Resources Listing and Mills Act Contract for the Property at 1334 Rossmoyn Avenue.
That's my train.
At D1 is Resolution Designating a Historic Resource and Authorizing a Mills Act Contract.
Okay, can we do this faster?
And I...
You got a brief report?
No, no, wait a minute. No, no, I purposely...
We've already, we've studied the report.
Move it.
Can we?
All right, please, please clear the chambers. No, I purposely wanted to give the property at 1334 Rossmoyn Avenue its place in the sun. I want the public to at least...
See the pictures?
See the pictures, take a look at the house. It's a beautiful, beautiful structure.
Wonderfully restored after the fire.
Just to correct, there was a typo in some of the pages you have. We have 1344 Rossmoyn Avenue is the nominated property, and it is a beautiful example of Tudor Revival architecture... Tudor Revival architecture in Glendale. It's located on Rossmoyn Avenue in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. And I think in this house, we kind of bring together a lot of the character-defining features of one of the most interesting styles that we have in Glendale, and the Historic Preservation Commission was particularly taken by this house when they looked at it and found that it really balanced so many of the different elements of the style, including the use of different textures and colors, the red brick, the white stucco, the brown half-timbering. This house has been owned by the current owners for the last 35 years or so, and they've done a great job being stewards for this historic property. If you look at the red brick, it was originally painted, when they bought the house, I believe a peach color. So they removed the paint, we now have the original color, the original tone. And you should also note that these owners are in the process of selling the house, but they've nominated it to the register and for the Mills Act as a show of faith. They're very concerned about what might happen to the property, and they want to ensure that it's protected in the future. Here are a few shots just of some of the details on the front facade in the Port Cachere area. The house had some changes in the backyard area at the upper level with the addition of a deck and a shade structure in the 1970s, I believe, but these didn't affect the basic character of the overall body of the house. One thing you should note is that the house is currently on two parcels. There was a lot split that was made, and you can see the back of the house here, seen from Mountain Street below, and the backyard is an incredibly steeply raked area, and it's covered with terraced gardens and walkways. It's quite beautiful, but the owners asked us and asked the Historic Preservation Commission that the backyard portion...
Is that Lot B?
This is Lot B. Yeah, so this is on the split portion of the lot, Lot B, and I'll show you a map here. So the house is on the left, on the larger portion of the lot. Lot B does have street frontage on Rossmoyn as it continues down the hill. There's no anticipation that this would be built on, but it would be possible, if it met zoning code and went through design review effectively, that this portion of the lot could be built on. The Preservation Commission took that into consideration when they heard this, and they felt that the house itself was worthy and that any construction on this lot, because it's a significantly lower elevation, wouldn't have a dramatic, probably, or probably wouldn't have a dramatic impact on the character of the house that's been nominated. So the commission found that it met criteria D of the city's ordinance, basically that its architecture reflects one of the best examples in the neighborhood. The commission also thought it was one of the best in the city, looking at it, and it also has a lot of the attention to detail and material and craftsmanship that we associate with houses of this period and type. The owners here, if you have any questions?
Maybe this'll help on the sale.
It could.
It's being seen all over.
I'm not licensed, though.
Jane, I'm curious.
Yes, sir.
I noticed a wood roof.
Mm-hmm.
How, under the current restrictions, does that roof ever get replaced? Can it be replaced as wood, given its historic nature?
No, fire code trumps historic code. We'd have to find a reasonable substitute soon.
So at some point in time it'll have to be replaced.
Small portions of it could be.
Small portions for maintenance, but at some point, when it has to be replaced, years from now, like it can't be replaced with wood, then?
Right.
I heard at the HPC meeting, one of the commissioners saying that they now have a fire-resistant wood shake roof, and they made this, and that meets all fire codes?
Yeah.
A suggestion was made that we change our code to allow that, and I think it's something that we should look into, given that it is, if it really does meet all the fire codes, there's no reason not to allow that particular type of shake roof.
Yeah, I've read about that, too.
Yeah, it's a coating, I believe, that's applied to the wood.
So I'd like to ask that we somehow, somebody, whoever the appropriate body is, look into that.
Yeah. The song, see?
Well, it would come out of the Fire Department, and we can have them bring you back more information on it. The question would be for homes that are designated as historic as opposed to any home in the city.
Right.
I think you'd want to limit it very much. I think you'd find the Fire Department saying fire resistance is not the same as the quality shingles we require.
That I don't know, and that's what I'd like to find out.
We can get you more information.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Najarian?
Researching this over here.
How do you deal with the fact that they added a pool in the back and a terrace cover? Doesn't that sort of...
When the commission looks at these properties, we expect historic houses changed, just like any other house changes. The question is whether those changes have had an impact on the character, the historic integrity of the house. And looking at this, in the lower right-hand picture, you see that second-floor balcony. That was actually an existing historic balcony, and the lower section below that is kind of a wooden trellis that's actually attached to the face of the building and then held up by some support columns. So overall, yes, it's a modern encroachment, but I think, you know, there's an expectation that people live in these houses, want to build a pool at some point, and hopefully do it in a way that wouldn't, you know, deny its eligibility.
So does the rock in that pool vertical wall?
Mm-hmm.
You think that goes with the rest of the design? I mean, structure's brick, the front is a brick facade, and that's a, you know, you think a brick would have been a better...
It could have been better. If this were a designated property and they came to us to put in a pool, that's where we would use some of our design review abilities to kind of help with that design.
You know, the pool, I think I'm in over my head at this point, so I'm going to stop at that.
Mr. Howard, followed by Mr. Trayman.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and again, I apologize for making these comments at this late date. I've just been informed by Mr. Hagani that the public notice for this had the wrong address. That wrong address is in the staff report as well, with the exception of one location. Our recommendation is this matter be taken off calendar, given that information, and that we renotice it. The main reason for that is we don't want, I mean, this is a fine structure, and it's a fine example of its style and the like, but what you don't want is to designate it, have the Mills Act contract in place, and then have someone try to set it aside, particularly a potential buyer later on that wants to decide that there's a flaw in the public notice that went out. And hence, my recommendation is, and I wish I would have known that prior to this conversation. I apologize.
I wish I'd have known that. I apologize to the property owners for having you sit through that hearing. I just wanted to...
Since I typed that typo, I apologize to everyone.
Would it be better to continue it or to just put it on consent?
We're going to have to put it on another, new notice, because the original notice, public notice that went out had the wrong address. Hence, the public, again, if they had any interest, the interest would have been in property at 1334, I suppose 1344. I can't speculate as to whether anybody would have an interest in it or not, but if we're going to do it legally correct in order to protect the interests of the city and the property owners, we need to do a new notice.
And it is a public hearing.
Okay.
And Mr. Trayman?
Well, in light of that, I'll truncate my comments, but only to say it's a beautiful property. And congratulations, and what a great job maintaining that. I think also, Mr. Butt, the fact that a house is deemed to be historic does not mean that nothing can be done to the house either. And I think that notion continues to linger in the public's mind. Can you address that just very briefly, so that it doesn't take us into an area that's beyond the scope of the...
In general, for historic property, whether it's on the Glendale Register or if it's in a historic district, we recognize that people's lives change, families change, the needs change, houses change with them, and the goal of historic preservation is to allow change while reflecting historic character and allowing it to be maintained. So that's where I come in, and the Preservation Commission comes in in our review of the properties, to make sure that new work is appropriate.
Right, and to some degree, with certain properties, for example, where it might be deemed historic in nature because of, let's say, the person who lived there, perhaps, any number of changes could have occurred to the property, which, but it still wouldn't change the historical significance.
If the property was primarily significant for the person, it could have a lot of changes.
Well, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds, and I'm particularly impressed that it appears you're interested in selling the property, but yet you want to preserve it for the overall impact it's going to make in the city of Glendale. So thank you very much. And this technical glitch, we'll be able to work through it. I'm sure you're going to have a unanimous vote on their Mills Act application.
Mr. Mayor, I've just had a side conversation with Mr. Hagani, noting that we should get the new notice out immediately and get it back on the agenda within the time, the minimum time allowed by law, ten days. So we'll get it on as quickly as possible.
Great, Mr. Trayman.
On a slightly humorous note, Mr. Mayor, what is that, 1344? Maybe we could approve that tonight.
Hey, thank you very much. Well, it'll be off.
It's a done deal.
All right, next, Mr. Kasaki.
Now we return to oral communication. Discussion is limited time, and it's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and assume, manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Al Hoffman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I have a couple of things that I've been pushing lately, and one of my main things is, since it's this Friday night, is the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale is hosting the Summer Night on the Plaza, which will be Friday night, July the 31st, from 6 to 9. Your ticket for $15 will include the two tickets on, opportunity to win two tickets on Southwest. I guess, almost, let me see, round trip valued at $800, so that ain't bad, just, you know, and then we're going to have lots of wonderful food, as I said before, Outback, Minks, Damon's, All Garden, all of that included in your price of your ticket, and live music, and it's a beautiful setting, as I've said before, in the plaza with the waterfall and so forth. And everybody has a great time. It's one of those things, it's a family evening. We welcome children. It's, for children, it's $5, and the adults, it's 15. I do have some reminders here, and I'll give them over, just to remind you to go and, to come, I mean, to the event. We'd love to see you there. One of the other things is that's happening this week, the Assistance League of Glendale are having their Christmas in July sale, and it'll be the 28th, 29th of this week. And they're located, The Thrift Alley, at 314 East Harvard Street. The money raised from the thrift shop is used to help schoolchildren with their clothing if they need it, if they can't afford, you know, the uniforms and so forth. We outfit them. We also supply books in the form of donations to the library of the schools, where we go and read our authors' and illustrator program. So, and of course, the senior luncheons, which I enjoy very much, to meeting all my friends there. I don't, I mean, I meet them there and help them, they have lunch there, and I have lunch with them, too. And it's a great event. It's on the Wednesday every month. So we need your support with donations to The Thrift Alley. We can always use donations. And also support us by coming, and it's a wonderful sale. Lot of lovely things, like for 10 cents on the dollar, a lot of them. So thank you very much. And of course, our big night out that we're looking forward to is the Night Out, Night Out Against Crime, which will be next Tuesday, August the 4th, and I am particularly involved in the Pacific Community Center, and we've had a lot of support. It's really been great, considering, you know, that we don't have a homeowners, any homeowners groups in that area. But we've had a lot of support from the community, from all the community, coming forward, knowing that we're kind of fighting an uphill swim, in a way, to get people involved, and it's really been terrific. We've really enjoyed it, the group that's backing it. And I am still waiting my luncheon date with Mr. Chapchan that I was promised by Mr. Starbird, and to explain to me about the Riverwalk beginning and ongoing, hopefully, ongoing, finishing up. I know with the grant money and so forth, it may be slowing coming in, or the money from the government, but hopefully we'll get going on that. I do have to say that the San Fernando, shall I say, gardening effort is really great. I really think it's going to be super when it grows up along San Fernando Road. It certainly is an improvement over the barren land that was there for many years. And also, all those horrid signs are gone that were up and down San Fernando Road, all those terrible, you know, advertising signs. It really improved it, it really did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Hoffman, followed by Gene Giappone.
Good evening again, Mayor Quintero, council, and staff. I've got about three items concerning the Rancho area. Our family has a five-unit apartment house on the corner of Sonora and Randall Street. And a few weeks ago, a Mr. Hooker from Verdugo Woodlands reported that his streets were never getting swept clean because cars were parked there all the time when the streets weaver came. Well, I can attest to that. When I'm cutting the lawn over there, I can very rarely clean up the mess in the street, and I see the street people going by, just going straight down the middle of the street, coming back in the middle, because all the parked cars. And I don't know if there's any way that, in those areas, that we could have a one-day-a-week no parking. It would help move a lot of cars that are parked there forever. There's a lot of cars, they move them back and forth, and it would really be beneficial for that area. The other thing in that area is I go by the Griffith Manor Park, and I don't know what's happening to all the property, that all the buildings were taken down for widening Flower Street, but it would be fantastic if that property could all be added to Griffith Manor Park. I don't know what your plans are for that, who owns it. What a great soccer fields it would make. It'd be fantastic to do that. I just, I see that park, I said, wow, that'd be fantastic if that was all park. We could sure use it. The kids over there could really use the soccer fields, or baseball, or whatever you could put in over there. It'd be a good consideration. Mr. Zern, is there a company called A&amp;G or something that cleans up streets and they go around? I think I saw it was A&amp;G, and they have their, they have a truck with a flashing light, and they go around, pick up rubbish and stuff. And I saw some of their workers sweeping up and sweeping leaves and junk right into the storm drains. So the particular one I saw was on the corner of Lake and Sonora, would be the northwest corner, and the guy was piled up all his leaves, and he's just pushing them right down into the drain. You know, they wore their little orange coats, and I think the company said A&amp;G or J&amp;G or something. Yeah. Next time I see the company, I'll get the name for sure and the license number and report it to you. And off another subject, talking about green, I went to, my daughter is a teacher at Art Center College Design, and about two weeks ago, they had a fantastic car show, and they also had, their theme of green was there, and Jay Leno came by with his new green car, and this thing you can hear a mile away, it's got a jet, it's a turboprop, turbojet engine, just like you'd have on a helicopter, and he's got it in this car. And he says, EcoCar, it runs on anything, you know, you put biofuel in it. But what a sound, and you should have seen this thing. And we just happened to leave, and he was leaving, we followed him all the way out, he went up Linda Vista, and I think he missed where you get on the freeway, and he headed on up towards JPL, but what a car, and what a sound it makes. So this would really be, somebody's got a clean air, but what noise pollution he makes. We could hear him coming, we thought, God, there's a jet coming, and it was a jet. That's Jay Leno and his cars. But, and there was a very interesting keynote speaker there, it was Bert Rutan, who is developing those, and oh my gosh, he has a different take on global warming. He says we should be fearing the next cycle going cold. He says when we all try to get back to the equator to survive the cold, he said, and he had 400,000-year history from ice, the Blastock Ice Cores that they took, on how our Earth has been cycling through hot and cold spells. took, on how our Earth has been cycling through hot and cold spells for 400,000 years. And it's a sinusoidal thing. So, he said, be cautious on how much you invest into all the greening and protection you're doing, because there's a lot to it that we don't really know. And he was, it was a very interesting speech he had. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jean Giacconi. Okay, DeKron Iskandarian, DeKron Iskandarian, followed by Nick Franklin.
Hello, how are you guys? Been a long wait. It's good to see you, Mayor, again. The mayor was at our grand opening. I'm a business owner, restaurant Zanku Chicken, I don't know, maybe some of you guys know.
I had some last night, actually.
Frank was there at our grand opening at the Glen Oaks store. And we're going to be doing the Toluca Lake grand opening pretty soon, so I'd love to personally invite you guys. It just came to my attention personally that a few of the police officers might be terminated at our city here in Glendale. And I wanted to come and talk about that today with you guys, but sitting back there, I got educated on tunnels and stuff that I knew nothing about tonight, which was kind of interesting. But if that's the case, and I don't know all the details, but I would love to talk to you a little bit about that today. I just wrote some notes with me on my phone of what I wanted to say. As business owner, I'm the oldest of four brothers in the Zanku Chicken family. I kind of do all our marketing and stuff. But we use the police all the time. And I don't know if you guys know, we have two locations now in Glendale. And I personally know a lot of the officers, and they've responded to many calls. And we love and appreciate our officers, obviously, but 90% of the time when we use these guys, it's for everyday stuff. And I wanted to talk about two personal situations that happened. At one point, we had a stalker keep coming in at the Glen Oaks store. It was a woman, I don't want to say her name. But she kept coming and bothering people, and bothering us, and the police came, were very, very professional, and handled the situation extremely properly, such to the point where she doesn't come anymore, she doesn't bother us. They took care of that situation. A few years ago, we were robbed at the Glendale location. There was an awesome response with SWAT and everything else. And just recently, some shadowy figures were hanging out at the Glen Oaks store. So, we called them in, and they came, and they took care of that problem. Because they would, they just, a bunch of men kept coming and giving us problems. So, I'm a business owner. I know that we're in a recession. I know that it's hard on everybody. It's hard on us. We own eight restaurants right now. There's going to be 11 soon. But it's really hard on everybody, and I can understand that. But what I wanted to say was, if there's anyone that's going to be laid off, I don't know why it would be the police officers first. I'm sure there's, you know, a lot of positions, but these, if there's two people that we use all the time, is the police officers and the firefighters. And firefighters helped save my home, and the police officers are always there for us. We appreciate them, we love them. These day-to-day things you guys are doing, we really appreciate, and we vote for you, and you do it. And public safety is a huge issue, you know? And as a business owner, they helped us clean up this Glen Oaks store. We recently hired a security guy to be there full-time, to help care, take care of some of those problems. But as a business owner, as resident as well, I live on Aspen Oak, I really care about public safety and the cops, and knowing that, hey, you know what, if we call them, they're going to be there. And Burbank is not laying off anybody, and to my knowledge, Pasadena is not laying off any police officers full-time or part-time. And I own a restaurant in Burbank, as well as Pasadena. So, it is really important to me that we keep these guys, and I believe some of these guys have been soldiers for us. And you know, it's fun to be here as a business owner, I get to do what I want, and we enjoy all of these freedoms, but, you know, these guys put their life on the line for us, for me, for you, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not willing to do that. I'm not a soldier. I never fought for my country. I love my country. But a lot of these guys have been soldiers, and they came back from Iraq, and they, and now they're, they're putting their life on the line for you and me on the streets, on the streets of Glendale and on the streets of LA. And I think we had a murder, I don't know the details, this year already. And we pride ourselves on being one of the safest cities in the United States, per capita. I think we would probably want to hold on to that reputation in Glendale, you know, as being one of the safest big cities in the United States. And I think that's probably, in large part, due to these guys. You know, sometimes we take them for granted. And just the other day, on my birthday, which was the 24th, I talked my way out of getting a stop, stop sign ticket. So, we take them for granted, but it's good to know that they're there.
I hope it didn't have anything to do with the chicken you've been serving. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rutan.
Thank you. Please, please consider it.
There'll be a reply. We always reply.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What officer was that?
All right, Nick Franklin, followed by Mike Mohill. Mr. Franklin needs a mic.
Hello to everybody, I'm back again. And I want to thank Mrs. Friedman. She was very kind to have conversation with me last week on the phone. She's a good lady. We have a problem, guys. Now they're trying to regulate when we can use the good house. Are you listening, Mayor?
Sure am.
Okay. They're trying to regulate when we can use the good house now. This is ability first, okay? They need some real serious sensitivity training on how to work with a disabled. Because they got the wrong name. You know, you got to have ability to have sensitivity. They don't have it. And also, we have made Congressman Schiff aware of all of this, and he's doing an investigation. This is my information. And we just need you guys to really look into this. Because while they are trying to improve things, their way of going about it is improper. Because we're not happy, we're very scared, and they're trying to intimidate us. It's going to be their way or no way. And that's not right. Because I don't think you guys would want that in your home. And we've been there 14 years, you know, 14 years. And one more thing to say about Armaz, he's still going to remain to be our friend, because he's still a very kind man. So, please, can you guys look into this? And I think we're supposed to have a meeting on Thursday. Mr. Starbird, you might want to check that out, please, so that we could, please, have somebody from the city come and at least sit in on the meeting, please? Thank you.
Mike Mohill, followed by Michael Arbo.
Mr. Mayor, council members. The other night, before the city council, I stated that our council members were beholden to the city's four unions. Giving raise to city workers was more important than balancing the budget or keeping the city infrastructure. Mr. Weaver took the lead in attacking me for using the word "union." He said condescendingly to me and the viewing audience that these unions were associations, and they had been around for many years, implying to say that union had a bad connotation. According to Webster's Dictionary, the word "association" is defined as an organization of persons having a common interest. The word "union" is defined as a political entity for mutual interest or benefits. What is it, Mr. Weaver, association or union? By the way, the Glendale Credit Manager, excuse me, Glendale Managers Association has only been around for five years. Why did they choose the word "association" rather than what they really are, but a political entity looking to get as much money and benefits from the city as possible? Councilman Weaver told the public last week that he never received endorsements from the city associations in his last election in 2007. That is the election in which I voted for Mr. Weaver and Mr. Draymond. I knew nothing but the candidate's character or record. As I told the council public, I was an ignorant voter and did not know the issue of the day or the influence of city unions. All I knew was that I did not want to see another Armenian on the city council, but had I known better, I would voted for, would not have voted for Mr. Weaver or Mr. Draymond. Funny, prior to the reason the unions did not endorse you or give you any campaign money, Mr. Weaver, in the election you have 2007, is because they felt you were going to lose your reelection, and they wanted to put their money on winning candidates. From 2001 to 2007, according to your 460 form, you did receive approximately $30,000 from all the city's four unions. That is the Glendale Managers Association, Police Officers Association, Firefighters Association, and the Glendale City Employees Association. You did state the other night that in 2007, you did not receive any endorsements or money from the four unions. But, Mr. Weaver, you did receive on March the 7th, 2007, $3,000 from the Glendale City Employees Federal Credit Union, which was later amended to read Glendale Manager Association. Was that an oops about which you did not want to remind the public about the other night? How convenient it was for you to twist words, Mr. Weaver. Councilman Draymond said he had run for office twice and never got endorsement from the Glendale Fire to Fire Association, Managers, or the Glendale City Employees Association. He said he did not get money from the Glendale Police Officers Association, both times he ran in 2005 and 2007. I guess the other unions did not want to put their money on a losing horse. However, your 460 form, political campaign form, showed that on March the 7th, you did receive $500 from the Glendale City Employees Association. Besides the March 28th payment of $2,000 by the Glendale Police Officers Association, was the $500 campaign money an oops from which you forgot to tell the public the other night? Oh, Mr. Draymond, there's one more little matter you forgot to tell the public the other night. Three months after the April 7th election, you did receive from the Glendale Managers Association $8,000. And a few months after you received their money, you and Mr. Weaver both approved a pay raise for the Glendale Managers Association. I guess the Glendale Managers Association thought you were not going to win your election, Mr. Draymond, so they held off and gave you the $8,000 three months after the April election. How clever the GMA was in 2007, because their endorsements, money, and influence was exposed to the public months after the election with Weaver and Draymond. A check for $8,000 July 5, 2007 for Mr. Draymond, another check for $3,000 for Mr. Weaver, under a pseudonym, Glendale City Employees Federal Credit Union, later amended to read Glendale Manager Association. So again, Councilman Weaver and Draymond, do these cities, do these cities' employees belong to an association or a political entity, or political union? Where I come from, if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, and has feathers like a duck, it must be a duck. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, again, the residents of Ivy Glen have asked me to be their spokesperson to you tonight. And of course, they continue to be distressed over losing their manager of over 14 years. But their main issue tonight is to bring to your attention that since our coming here before you last week, first of all, we want to thank you for the efforts you've made on our behalf to see that we have a just hearing of our concerns. A meeting is scheduled this Thursday. There will be a person from the city attending that meeting. And we are very grateful to have that meeting. It'll be at 6:00 PM this coming Thursday. But since they knew that the city was going to be coming, they started to harass and prevent the residents from meeting. They came out with letters for recertification, which is a form letter from HUD, which basically says that we have till October 10th in order to recertify to be able to have housing there. The letter originally was not in Armenian for the residents who only speak Armenian. The interim manager insinuated to those residents that if you don't sign right now, right today, we will fine you. And the letter does not say that. It says, we have a reasonable time to respond by October 10th, and that even if we fail to respond by October 10th, they can legally do no extra charges for rent or anything until December 1st of 2009. So already, this shows you that they are already using harassment and tactics to prevent us from speaking our mind, to prevent us. So on Friday, on the 24th, the residents of Ivy Glen decided to have a meeting in the Goody House, which has always been open to them for the last 14 years, in order to have a meeting, to calm down the Armenians who are residents of that building, and to explain to them what that letter really meant. And that was the only purpose of the meeting, to explain that letter to them so they would be less frightened and less fearful. At 5:10, the meetings began, the resident, the interim manager came into the meeting, said, I have to leave early tonight, you cannot meet here, you have to leave. I have to lock up right now, I have family emergency, I have family to do with my family, I have to leave right now. You cannot meet here. And so, we left. She did not leave for a whole hour later, till 6:10. Our meeting would have been over by 6:10. So we looked up the rights from HUD, posted it on the door of the manage, the office. It says they have the right to organize as residents without obstruction, harassment, or retaliation for property owners or management. The right to meet without the owner or manager present. The right to be recognized by property owners and managers, having a voice in residential community affairs. And so, they, we were denied access to the building to have our rights to have a meeting, which are constitutional rights, the right to assemble peacefully. So then they posted, and after the person who posted those on the door, they wrote him a letter that we just received today, telling about the meeting, saying that it has always been the practice at this building and the other apartment buildings of Billy Fones, the community rooms are available by reservation for meetings. No such stipulation was ever given to the residents, that such a rule was in effect, in the whole time that they have lived there. Tonight also, we were given this. This, all scheduled activities at the Goody House need a reservation. You may reserve your time during office hours or call your reservation by phone. This procedure is being implemented to prevent any conflicts of scheduling. Please make your reservation 48 hours in advance in order to secure your event time. We have a meeting coming up. How are we going to come together in 40 hours before that meeting, when it's just posted tonight? We're going to give you all these things from HUD and all these letters to show you that indeed, they are starting to use tactics to harass us and prevent us from our legal rights and our constitutional rights to be able to have a voice in our community.
Okay, thank you. That concludes oral communications. I had a question. Let me ask you quickly, sir, how many residents are there in this project area?
There are 23 apartments, and I believe a total of 35 residents.
Okay, thank you. I asked last week, what was the, I know we were originally contracted with HUD or received HUD funds for the renovation, for the housing, et cetera, but did we ever find out what our relationship is with the ability first, with the operators?
I don't know the answer to that. I know we have, we have staff assigned to meet with residents. I know we have staff assigned to meet with residents. They will be at this meeting. I didn't think to get that information, but we'll get it for you.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, I know we were involved in the design, we moved the Goodie House, et cetera, et cetera, but at this point, what is the city of Glendale's contractual obligation?
I think it's private. We're going to have to check. We're going to have to check.
A private nonprofit?
I believe so, but again, I don't want to speak out of school.
Yeah. I believe it's a typical affordable housing project where we have funds invested in order to help rehab the project. HUD has money, and it's through that investment with the development agreement and the housing agreement that we have a relationship with the owners. But we'll get you all of that.
And Ability First is obviously a contractor to whoever.
Either contractor or owner.
Ms. Friedman?
On that subject, I'm very concerned about this, about what's happening. And this is not a usual group of residents and a usual type of apartment. This is a particularly vulnerable group of people. And I'm concerned about what's happening, and I would like to hear from the city. Who's going to be there on Thursday?
Yeah, let me tell you what I've asked staff to do. And that is to meet with the residents so we can get directly from the residents what's going on and what their concerns are. We're going to have a staff member, as the residents have requested, particularly one who can speak Armenian, at the upcoming meeting, but that's not going to be our only contact with the residents, then to report back on the result of their meetings and interviews.
And if Adam Schiff's office is involved, maybe we can find out what their involvement is and somehow get information from them.
I'm not sure to what extent they are involved. In all likelihood, they would refer that to us as local agents. I mean, that's typically what the congressman's office does on these sorts of things, but we can certainly check. We're taking it very seriously, and we're trying to get all the sides of the story, whatever they might be.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Draymond?
Yeah, I'm next. Okay. Well, my goodness, Mr. Mohill, you want to continue fencing and playing games. As usual, your facts are so wrong and so off the mark that it leads one to question whether or not they're just mistakes or just the continuation of perpetuating nonsense. First of all, I'll restate what I said before. I have not been endorsed, well, let me put it the easier way. The only employee association that I have ever been endorsed by in the successful run in 2007 for the city council and the unsuccessful run in 2005 for the city council was the Glendale Police Officers Association. I never stated that I did not receive funds from them. I stated they're the only ones I received funds for with an endorsement. I also stated that I received money from the GMA, but not an endorsement, nor was I endorsed by the Glendale Employees Association, City Employees Association, nor the Glendale Firefighters Association in either run. I was endorsed by quite a few organizations, but in terms of city employees associations, only the GPOA. I'm not sure where you got the idea that I stated I received no funds from the GPOA. I stated I did receive in both runs. And, excuse me, Mr. Mohill, you've had your say. I'm going to have mine now. In addition, the money that I mentioned last week from the GMA and the Glendale Employees Association came after, they came in July, the one you're referring to. You're quite right. It came in early July. It came in after a June vote on a memorandum of understanding. I did vote for that contract. Then the money came in, and we had a vote on July 17th. Let me first read you from the minutes. It was an ordinance offered. Oh, by the way, it was, the motion was made by Councilmember Yusefian for a GMA salary increase. And Councilmember Draymond indicated that since he had recently received a campaign contribution from the Glendale Management Association, he would need to recuse himself or abstain from participating and voting because of the amount he received. There could be the appearance of a conflict. City Attorney Scott Howard commented that it was not a conflict under the political format because campaign contributions were not constituted income. I think they meant constituted as income. But if Councilmember Draymond felt in his own manner it created a potential of conflict of interest, he was free to abstain and not participate, which is exactly what I did. Then there was another ordinance offered for an increase in salary to executives, also a motion made by Councilmember Yusefian. I did vote on that one. Mr. Quintero was the sole vote no on the executives. Then the next one was, again, offered by Councilmember Yusefian, a memorandum of understanding, and in other words, a scheduled salary increase that involved the GMA. Again, I recused, I abstained from that vote. The next one was again on a salary increase for executives offered by Councilmember Yusefian. And again, Mr. Quintero was the sole dissenting vote on that. And then lastly, there was a resolution, an item, I think it was 8A, yeah, which was a GMA for sworn police managers, and I also abstained on that. And just to drive the point home a little more clearly, if they're still awake downstairs, can we run the footage, please?
Mr. Mayor, on 7B, I am, and I will need the direction of City Attorney on this. I will either need to recuse myself or abstain. I received a campaign contribution from the GMA recently that is not reported because it will fall in the category "reporting by July 31st." And I believe the appearance of that would be, because of the amount involved, I think would create the appearance of a conflict.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to point out, that is not a conflict under the Political Reform Act.
I understand.
Because campaign contributions are not considered income under the Political Reform Act, but as I think Mr. Draymond laid out in very articulate fashion, in his own manner, it creates potential for appearance of a potential conflict of interest, and he's free to abstain and not participate.
Okay. Let's see how it turns out. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Abstain.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Urgency ordinance providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the city of Glendale to supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding. Glendale Management Association offered on 7/10/2007 by Councilmember Yusefian.
Move 7D.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Draymond?
Same as stated for 7B.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Abstain.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Item made as action items. 8A is Acting Director of Administrative Services regarding memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale Management Association, GMA, on behalf of sworn police managers. And 81 is resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding commencing July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2011.
Move 8A.
Second.
Mr. Draymond?
This would be the same as 7D and 7B.
Okay. Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Safe to say that I think that was the very last time that your colleague you referred to earlier today, Mr. Allen, had anything positive to say about me, was about abstaining on those votes. I would have thought, Mr. Mohill, that you would least read Vanguard, but apparently you missed that one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Weaver?
Well, there you go again, Mr. Mohill, throwing a bunch of crap on the wall and hoping something sticks. I tried to give a broad stroke, brush stroke across the canvas. I think you're going to catch something. And I don't know why you didn't go back to 1993, the first time I ran and check all those records instead of only starting at 2001 to do it. You seem to be insinuating because I got it, I'm on the take, and my vote is favored, and you can't prove a thing. You're just throwing this stuff out and hoping that somehow the community at large will agree with you. In fact, we're only you, Mr. Barry Allen Silverman, and Herb Milano, and yourself are about the only ones on this city that believe poppycock that you throw out here. It's unbelievable. As for that check, gee, I guess you didn't know that most of the associations, and they are associations, that's the way they're put together. What's the word I'm thinking of? Articles and corporation, et cetera. Most of them keep their, as far as I know, a lot of their accounts are in the credit union, and the checks are drawn on a credit union check. And I'm guessing the last one in 2007, my CPA recorded it because of what it said on it. And when I found out, no, it wasn't them, it was GMA, whatever you said it was, I corrected it. I had that problem in past years. And if you think that two of us getting any monies, when five of us decide on a salary, you're saying that it's not just the two that got it, for instance, the '07 salary, it's just not the two of us, it's the other three that must have got it in '05 or '03 or '01. So we're all in cohorts, cohorts, what am I trying to say? Cohorts, we're all working together. We all have a conspiracy thing going, and you, being so brilliant, you have figured it out. Try to get some traction in the community on conclusions you draw. This has come up year after year after year after year, and you still are on it. See where it gets you? Nowhere. Nowhere at all. I wish you'd give it a rest and get on with your life.
Mr. Najarian?
I've had it with you today, Mr. Mohill. Earlier today, you made an ethnic generalization against Armenians. Oh, well, you people like to play soccer, don't you? Now, whether that was intentional, reckless, negligent, I let it slide. Mr. Draymond picked up on it in a sensitive way. I think he tried to push back a little bit. Now, today, you're telling us about how you were prejudiced, so prejudiced against Armenians in 2007 that you wouldn't vote for one because you didn't want one on the city council. Oh, but now you've changed, but you've mentioned that before. I don't want to hear that again. That's highly offensive to me. I mean, to say that you haven't, actually, you haven't said that you've turned over then you leave. All you said was, in 2007, that's the way you felt. If I hear that again, Mr. Howard, I'm going to object as a point of order, as comments that are inappropriate and not relevant to the subject matter of the city council. And you can be the referee, or the mayor can be the referee, but that's enough, Mr. Mohill. That's enough. And that's my last warning. I want to make you clearly understand how I feel about it. It's offensive to me. It's offensive to my family. It's offensive to many other people, not only people who are Armenian. It's enough. We don't generalize about racial or ethnic groups. It's inappropriate.
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, one other thing, Mr. Mohill. I'd like you to come back and report to us, well, I won't be here next week, but you can report to my colleagues on how much money the different associations gave Bob Yusefian in the last couple of elections and how he voted. Let's be fair about it. Let's treat everybody equally. He got a fair sum of money, too. So let's air them all out.
Any other comments? Okay? Need a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Well, no, actually, next. Is there any new business? No other business?
Well, then I move to adjourn.
Second. We are adjourned.